Kanzu.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Kostic?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Cersei?
Here.
Great, I'm looking at our agenda moving forward on Wednesday, February 23rd. Our regular meeting will start with a presentation at 6:30. The presentation will be of a community science fellow project assessing how to prioritize stormwater infrastructure under a changing climate. And then at 7:30, we'll have a proclamation for invasive species week. And then a public hearing on traffic calming requests on Fourth Avenue, Glen Side Drive, Prince George's Avenue. Our voting session next week is first reading ordinance approving ARPA spending plan and budget and the first reading ordinance adopting a redistricting plan. We then have two work sessions, one is a traffic calming request on Fourth Avenue, Glen Side, and Prince George's. And then we have our reimagining public safety review and action plan by the subcommittee of the city council who's been working on this. On Wednesday, March 2nd, we will, our meeting will begin at 7:30. Tentatively, we will have a presentation from Adventist Healthcare regarding their proposal for primary and behavioral health in the city. And then our voting session will be the second reading ordinance approving ARPA spending plan and budget, second reading ordinance adopting a redistricting plan, and the first reading ordinance on traffic calming. And then on Wednesday, March 9th, at 7:30, we'll begin, we'll have a couple of presentations on the minor master plan update, the police chief's advisory board review of the reimagining public safety report, the police department's annual report, and our voting session that night will be on traffic calming. That'll take us through the next couple of weeks. Now we'll go quickly, just to a quick legislative update on how things are going in Annapolis before we turn to our public hearing. And I'll turn it over to Suhanie to give us an update.
Thank you, Kate. Hello, everyone. So a lot has been happening. Coming up, and then I'll move into some, February 7th, that was the Senate bill introduction deadline date that has passed. And on February 11th, there was a House bill introduction deadline date that has passed. So now, majority of bills have been introduced at this point, almost all of them. And the next big date that we will have to be looking out for is March 21st, which is a crossover date. And at this point, any bills that have passed one chamber will have to be sent to the other. Another just general update is the Senate has moved to in-person testimony. They've moved away from Burtso now. If folks want to come in to testify.
Can you hear me? Your connection is really shaky.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm gonna...
That's okay.
Let me know. Are folks able to hear me if I keep my video better?
Talk a little bit more, let's see.
So for the, for the Senate now, folks will just have to sign up after 4:00 PM, the day prior to the hearing, up until 10:00 AM of the day of the hearing. Am I okay? Like, can folks hear me now?
Yes, you're good.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, and then just some major bills that Tacoma Park is looking out for. We're preparing testimony for a couple of major priorities for Tacoma Park. We're looking at Delegate Charcutian Safe Roads Act, Delegate Wilkins Just Cause Bill. Keeping a percent of Smith's child acts, including the broadband bill for apartment buildings, and also just a couple of energy efficiency bills related to buildings. And also this past week Tacoma Park just submitted some testimony and weighed in on kind of that omnibus climate solutions bill in the Senate, that Senator Pinsky's bill. And the hearing was just a couple of days ago, earlier this week. So I think that is a legislative update.
Great, thank you, Suhanie. Councilwoman Kostic has a question.
Thank you for the update. I just wanted to ask, there was a TPNB meeting, Transportation Planning Board meeting today, and there was reference made to HB 469, which is a bill introduced by Delegate Carr and Delegate Lehman on traffic signal control monitoring systems. And it's related to reciprocity across borders. So if someone gets a ticket from a speed camera in DC, whether that can be enforced in Maryland or vice versa is my understanding. And I just was curious if that was something that you all have known anything about or have heard anything about. I'm not sure the specifics of it or not, I just was curious if you knew kind of whether that was moving forward or had any thoughts on it.
Thank you, Councilmember Kostic. I am going to flag the bill, and we will certainly look into it, and I can provide some more information.
Great, thank you.
Great, terrific. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Suhanie, for joining us and all your work representing the city in Annapolis. Now we will move on to our public hearing. We have a public hearing on the redistricting plan. And we have a number of people who've signed up. And first, I'll call Susie Stimler, who will start. That's all.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Two weeks ago, I spoke on behalf of myself and many of my Forest Park neighbors to ask you to modify option A to preserve our community. And tonight, I return with gratitude. I'd like to thank you for taking our input into consideration and for including all of Conway Avenue, all of Prince George's Avenue, and Belford Place in Ward 2 and Option Y. I'd also like to take this opportunity to share my thoughts on Option Y versus Option Z. I live on Conway Avenue. Under Option Y, I'd still be in Ward 2. Under Option Z, I'd be moved toward 3. And I'd like to stay in Ward 2 with my neighbors, North of Ethan Allen. I'll talk about one reason. The neighborhoods north and south of Ethan Allen, 410, and current Ward 2 share concerns about both Ethan Allen and New Hampshire Avenue. And we're invested in coming up with improvements to pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular safety. Two recent examples, one, the recent SHA proposal about that intersection of Elm and 410, which would have had effects on Prince George's, Jackson, and March avenues, north and south of Ethan Allen, we all care. The second, the new avenue bikeway, that segment between March and Poplar, that's Ward 2. Also, just broad sense, choosing between options Y and Z is essentially a choice of how you will configure wards 2 and 3. The other four wards stay the same. It's a choice between Y, which roughly keeps the current and historic Ward 2 boundaries, and Z, which is a significant restructuring of Ward boundaries and constituents. And Option Z also moves to incumbent council members from their current wards. The goals of redistricting, as I can tell, are to ensure representation, including equity concerns, to ensure one person, one vote. My understanding is that there are not significant differences in demographics and population statistics between options Y and Z. So why adopt Option Z, significant restructuring of Ward boundaries and constituencies? Which also results in moving two council members out of their wards. Please adopt Option Y. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Arthur David Olson.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. Before retiring, I did computer work. The computer realm legend is that it was a Microsoft help desk staffer who, in response to a call about a problem with misbehaving software, first said, "That's not a bug, it's a feature." At base, the claimed virtue of Option Y is that its wards align more closely with the current ones. To paraphrase the Microsoft staffer, "That's not a feature, it's a bug." To see the bug, you need to look back no further than 2020, when the unopposed Ward 2 candidate lived between the two Ward 3 candidates. The same would have been true had Option Y been in effect at that time. At this point, I'd usually break out some statistics about how the wards in Option Z are more compact than those in Option Y. If you're reading laps the same way I am, it's clear that they are more compact even without statistics. Compactness is called for in the city charter and in the redistricting criteria approved by the council last year. Conformity with existing wards is not called for in the charter, code, or criteria. I've seen the claim that Option Y gives more people the chance to vote on their current incumbent council member. That's a speculative benefit at best. For all I know, one or both of the incumbents in the wards that are different under Options Y and Z will choose not to seek reelection. And for all I know, one or both may run for mayor, given that the incumbent mayor is a declared candidate for higher office, that's likelier this year than usual. I don't believe such a speculative benefit should have any weight in the redistricting decision. I hope the council will adopt Option Z. I hope the council will not, at this late stage of the process, make a decision based on newly added criteria. And using the guidance that voters should choose their representatives rather than representatives choosing their voters, I hope the council will not make further changes beyond those it has already made. Finally, I offer my condolences to Councilmember Siemens, who, under either option, will still have me as a constituent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next, we have Tom. Yep, there's Tom.
Everybody, good evening. My name is Tom DiLiberto. I live on Prince George's Avenue, right near, next to New Hampshire Avenue. I currently live in Ward 2. First, I want to thank everyone for taking and listening to all the community input on redistricting. I'm here tonight to strongly push Option Y for redistricting, especially for how it treats my area of Tacoma Park, Forest Park. Option A had originally forced my home to be in those around us in the Ward 3, separating us from the rest of our Forest Park community. And Option Y has remedied that. Option Y also importantly keeps together the communities around Ethan Allen Avenue, unlike Option B and Z, which puts kind of an arbitrary line right through the middle of our community. From a 40,000-foot level perspective, separating Ethan Allen might seem reasonable, right? But we don't live on a computer map or a paper map. We actually live in real neighborhoods. And if we look at the community dynamics on the ground, not from a map level, you can quickly see that those two areas on either side of Ethan Allen are really one big community, especially as it relates to our biggest concerns, car traffic and cut through traffic on New Hampshire Avenue and Ethan Allen. And it's something that we simply do not really share with Ward 3. It's just not there, sorry. But Option Z forces us into that, which doesn't make any sense. In fact, Option Y keeps together communities already actively working together to make our streets safe for pedestrians and cyclists, our family and our friends. Just recently, those of us on both sides of Ethan Allen had meetings with officials to discuss safety concerns at Elm Avenue and Ethan Allen, on both sides of the street. Next week, we'll be discussing right here, traffic calming measures on PG Avenue, because the cars that cut through Forest Park to and from Ethan Allen, to and from New Hampshire, are often the same ones, cars, that are also cutting through the other side of the neighborhood in Ethan Allen. Simply put, dealing with New Hampshire and Ethan Allen binds these two communities together, stronger than anything that binds us to Ward 3, to the current Ward 3. And we all know that traffic concerns are not going away. Because I'm a nerd, I downloaded all of the vehicular crash data in Maryland from 2015 to 2021. And on New Hampshire Avenue, just from Ray Poplar Road to Ethan Allen, from 2015 to 2021, there were nearly 200 traffic accidents. That number easily passes 200 if we continue farther north. So please do not arbitrarily split our community into two, when we're already working so hard to make our streets safer for our neighbors and our family. It just adds a needless complication to a major safety issue that's affecting this part of town, let alone the fact that this would basically throw our current representation all out of whack and we basically start informing others of issues that we've been dealing with for many, many years. So please, I favor Ward Option Y and to stay in Ward 2. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Robert Dreyer.
Hi, I'm Bob Dreyer. I live on Sycamore, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I speak tonight to urge the council not to weigh political factors improperly in choosing the new redistricting map. Several Tacoma Park city council members have said that they believe proposed redistricting map Z may violate the Tacoma Park City Charter, because it would place two incumbent council members in new districts, potentially costing them their seats. These members have stated that they are likely to vote for map Y, which would retain the incumbent council members in their current districts. It's understandable that council members would feel this way. We respect each other as colleagues. But this interpretation of the city charter gets it backwards. There's no indication that map Z was gerrymandered to seek the defeat of any candidate. But selecting map Y because it would allow incumbent council members to retain their seats is squarely prohibited by the city charter. The city charter sets forth objective criteria for redistricting, directing that wards be compact in form, composed of adjoining territory, and have substantially equal population. The charter further requires that ward maps be geographically contiguous and to the extent practical recognize natural boundaries. The charter expressly prohibits the council from drawing new ward maps based on whether the maps would enhance or impede the election of incumbent council members or other candidates. It says, "No ward shall be gerrymandered to ensure the election or defeat of any incumbent candidate or potential candidate." There's no indication that map Z was drawn by the consultants to ensure the defeat of the two incumbents whose residences would be placed in new districts. Map Z adheres closely, and more closely than map Y, by the way, to the requirements of the city charter that wards be compact, geographically contiguous, equal in population, and recognize natural boundaries. So there's no basis for the concern that map Z violates the prohibition on gerrymandering in the city charter. But selection of a new ward map because it would enhance the likelihood that incumbent members of the council can retain their seats would squarely violate the charter's prohibition on drawing ward maps to ensure the election of an incumbent. Keeping your colleagues in place on the city council is not your job. You should entirely disregard this improper factor and select a map that would best serve the city in coming years based on the criteria established in the city charter. The pernicious effect of gerrymandering on our democracy is unfortunately visible all around us today, with political parties carving out safe seats for incumbent office holders that preclude fair elections. Tacoma Park should be the last place to embrace that practice. I urge the council to get advice of legal counsel before selecting a map based on whether it would maintain the ability of incumbent council members to retain their seats. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Nadine Block.
Ms. Block is on the phone. I believe she can speak.
Yep, I'm here. This is Nadine Block. I live in Ward 3. And I'm here tonight to urge the council to choose a ward map based on charter criteria, not on politics, and not to succumb to gerrymandering in our fine town. Our council choosing map Y to help incumbents retain seats is exactly the kind of gerrymandering that the charter prohibits. The assertion that residents have a right to their current council member and that the map Z or B, whichever one you want to talk about right now, would deprive them of it is patently in violation of the spirit and letter of the charter. Moreover, why do incumbents need special treatment when no incumbent has lost in almost two decades since about 2003, and incumbents have a 97% reelection rate since 1966? We don't really need to protect incumbents in this city. We don't even know if they're running. The city charter states that Ward boundaries should be compact, should recognize natural boundaries, and should not be gerrymandered to ensure the election or defeat of any incumbent candidate. Option Z consolidates Ward 3 into a compact shape. It aligns with ecological watershed and major street boundaries. It matches up with the original BF Gilbert tradition of 1886, and it returns Woodland Avenue to Ward 3, where both sides of Woodland had been historically until the 2010 census, as someone just mentioned. Option Z fits the requirements listed in the city charter in the council section 301C. Unfortunately, some of the council have said they want map Y in order to help prevent incumbents from being redistricted into new wards. The council choosing map Y to help incumbents retain seats, again, I have to repeat this, is exactly the kind of gerrymandering the charter prohibits. We still all can work for safe streets, as was mentioned earlier, and we all continue to work for a better city. So to reiterate, we are watching. We are watching what you choose to do with our money. We're watching what you choose to do in our name. We're wondering why you're not taking into account the consultant's recommendations. We deserve to elect our council members, not to have them choose the constituents. Council choosing map Y to help incumbents retain seats is exactly the kind of gerrymandering the charter prohibits. Charter criteria, not politics, dictates choosing map Z. It would be smart, as other people have mentioned, to get legal counsel before you choose otherwise, before selecting a map based on non-legal and not impartial recommendations from affected council members who have a potential conflict of interest and should likely recuse themselves from this vote. Again, thank you for all of your service to our community. In this one case, your vote here will actually be a legacy vote and will matter for a long time to come. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Hardwick.
Sorry. Okay, here I am. Okay, good evening. I'm Rachel Hardwick, Flower Avenue in Ward 2. I attended one of the consultant's presentations, had an opportunity to ask questions. I appreciate the interactive maps, and I like that the maps were redrawn based on community input. So thank you for all of those things. However, I'm nevertheless concerned about the redistricting process. First, I am concerned that the council is deciding the new Ward boundaries. Ideally, the final decision would be in the hands of a panel of citizens who take into account all of the things that go into redistricting, including population changes, compactness, natural boundaries, communities of interest, and the consultant's recommendations. Secondly, and tied to my first concern, is that council members appear to be voting to secure their incumbent advantage. I am concerned that there is no clear conflict of interest criteria for disqualification of decision makers in our process. Third, I'm concerned that the process, for the reasons I and others have already given, will not increase or instill public confidence in our redistricting process. Public trust increases when there is transparency, a robust discussion of conflict of interest, conflicts of interest, and possibly a recusal from voting. Again, there appears to be a conflict of interest when council members are choosing wards and boundaries based on whether they may run again and what appears to be an effort to ensure advantages of incumbency, or even the legacy they leave for future council, for a future council of their design when they move on to other elected positions. Please work toward full transparency by disclosing legal advice, legal opinions, and discussions between decision makers not yet made public. Fourth, I appreciate that the city's attorney is a jack-of-all-trades when it comes to municipal matters. I myself served as a jack-of-all-trades in my nonprofit corporate legal career, but I knew when to call in outside expertise when legal analysis was needed in areas that went beyond my knowledge and my experience. That could be the case here. Before we run the risk of taking action that could jeopardize the fairness or constitutionality of our redistricting, I encourage the city to get advice from a lawyer who specializes in these matters. Today, there are multiple threats to our democracy on display at all levels of government in the United States. In Tacoma Park, a city that prides itself on its progressiveness, let's be sure that we are living up to our ideals, including ensuring that our redistricting is based on sound principles that further fairness and constitutional principles and ensure that the process is transparent and ethical. We all need to work to strengthen our democracy and public trust in our institutions, including the city of Tacoma Park government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Anderson.
Yes, I have a video, Ms. Carpenter, if you would put that up. Thank you. Good evening, Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue. When Senator Edward Kennedy died, there was a comment about who would succeed him in his seat. The rejoinder was that the seat belonged to the people of Massachusetts, not a man or a party. This rejoinder was from the Republican. This rejoinder was from the Republican who won that election. Next. Council members' emails. I have two. One, council member says Option Z does not comply with city requirement to ensure the election or defeat of any incumbent as it moves two current council members out of the ward. Next. Second council member says, although Z is more compact and compactness is emphasized, it would appear that the Option Z gerrymanders in balancing compactness against preventing large number of residents from being able to vote for their current council members if they wish to, I come down in support of Y. So that's, in other words, moving some constituents from one ward to another in some way ensures a defeat of an incumbent. Is this a real argument? Next. The city's redistricting FAQs page says the city hired Flow Analytics to develop maps. Flow developed these maps with city staff and resident input based on a number of criteria, one of which is the following. Next. No ward should be gerrymandered, changed to favor one party or class to ensure the election or defeat of any incumbent candidate or potential candidate. Change to favor one party or class is read in red. Here, it's not in red on this site, but it is on the site. That definition of gerrymandered was not in the resolution, but apparently uses a guiding principle by Flow and the city staff. Next. City elections have no political parties, so that doesn't count. Class typically refers to a social, racial, or economic group. Unless our council members consider themselves a protected class, incumbents are not included in the operational definition. Next. To believe that the charter prohibits redistricting, the changes of council members' ward, we'd have to believe, number one, our nationally recognized consultant, Flow Analytics, and the city staff have made a fundamental error. Two, the city attorney has never been asked for an opinion on the plans. Is that actually true? And three, the city council as a whole has and has been allowed to move forward a plan that does not meet the requirements of the city charter. Next. And we'd also have to believe that modifying ward boundaries in some way ensures the election or defeat of any incumbent candidate. Of course, some residents will change wards. That's pretty much the definition of redistricting. But how does that ensure election or defeat of anyone? Next. Words belong to the residents, not the politicians. Council members cannot be allowed to choose their voters, and the great concern is that this decision will be made based upon the needs of council members rather than on the needs of the city and its residents. With that in mind, given that Option Z is the most compact and complies with all of the requirements of the charter, I urge you, council, to approve Option Z. Council members, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, we have Robert Antonucci.
Hello. Yeah, I am Robert Antonucci. I live on Conway Avenue, so I'm actually in one of the places that has been affected. And I'm actually very grateful that you came up with the options Y and Z. I thought that, you know, the general guidance given to the original redistricting of, you know, using district census blocks was a good general guidance, but there were a couple of blocks that basically created problems, and I think it did need tweaks. And I'm really grateful that X and that Y and Z were created to just tweak that where the strict adherence to census blocks made it problematic. So I am thrilled. Thank you very much for coming up with Y and Z. With respect to Y or Z, I don't exactly have an objective opinion, since I like my council member. But I will say, and I am not one person who knows all about Tacoma Park, but I know my neighborhood, and I'm looking at Options Y and Z. I'm looking at Ward Two. And you've heard it here before, that just the things that concern me about my neighborhood, I seem more afflicted in Option Y than Option Z. Yes, Option Z does look very nice on paper, but it does not seem to capture the issues that are affecting my community and connecting them with the other people that it's also affecting. So I'm in favor of Option Y, my not objective opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Sally Tabor.
I'm sorry. I'm not seeing myself on the screen. Okay, I'm just gonna go ahead then.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Good morning. Good evening. My name is Sally Tabor. I live at 703 Auburn Avenue in Ward Two. I am testifying tonight in support of Option Y, which closely follows the boundaries of the two neighborhood associations in Ward Two, Saskia, the South of Sligo Citizens Association, and Long Branch Sligo. As a past president of Saskia, which represents about 600 households, I think having all of Saskia within one ward helps in dealing with city council on various issues. The boundaries of Saskia are Sligo Creek Parkway from Jackson to New Hampshire Avenue on the north, New Hampshire Avenue on the east with the addition of the Kentland-Hopewell Larch Triangle, Conway and Woodland on the south, and on the west, Elm Avenue to Prince George's to Jackson Avenue. This has been the boundaries of our neighborhood association for 20 years or so. Much of the Saskia neighborhood was in Prince George's County when I first moved here, but is now in Montgomery County due to unification in 1997. When I moved here in 1986, Saskia was smaller, but over the years, it has expanded with the addition of the Belford area, south of Ethan Allen before unification, which is now known as the Forest Park area, and the addition of Cherry Colby later on. For both areas, the interest in joining Saskia was to be able to speak with one neighborhood voice, especially in city manners, matters, and in issues with Sligo Creek Park, which is on our border to the north. And these residents wanted to be part of one neighborhood organization. So I really appreciate that you have you have taken into account the people who have spoken from both Saskia and from Long Branch Sligo, and you have given us an alternative map Y, which includes all of us in there. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Emmanuel Wagner.
Thank you so much. After two years of virtual meeting, you would think I know where the mute button is. Okay, thank you very much, council members. I thank you very much for your time today and listening to all the feedback and also for taking this time for redistricting and this in-depth process that you've been going through. Oh, my video. Okay, there you go. I urge you to vote in favor of Option Y, which will keep, as Sally just mentioned, the Saskia neighborhood together. I'm a member of Saskia and live in the Saskia neighborhood. Option Y would keep that area together, which would be preferable to splitting it up, especially because Option Z would actually cut off Saskia and Ethan Allen, and it put everything south of Ethan Allen to the Ward Three. However, there are a good number of issues that we are experiencing on the Ethan Allen Avenue. And so having just one ward member represent neighbors on that street would be highly beneficial to just the process instead of having neighbors on different sides of the street having to talk to different ward members. So for that, I would urge you to vote for Option Y. Also, just because a lot of longtime residents have been talking here, neighbors do tell me that a few decades ago that Ward Three was initially redrawn to exclude the residence of an incumbent Ward Three council member, and that back then, the backlash was so severe that the city had to amend the ward boundary to include the sliver of the street where the incumbent council member lived. So it seems like there has been work, you know, done in that regard, and some members seem to residents may not remember that, but I think the process has been very thorough. One aspect that I do want to mention is when you're redrawing the ward maps, make sure to include residents on both sides of the street and not cut, you know, not cut the ward boundaries in the middle of the street, as I mentioned on Ethan Allen. That's one example. But there are other examples in the current ward maps. And the 2013 map that you, that our current wards are drawn upon, actually does a really good job of trying to keep the neighborhoods together and neighbors that are on one street together in one ward. So thank you so much for your time today. This has been drawn-out process, very thorough. Appreciate all the feedback you're taking on, and please vote Option Y. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Wagner. I believe that those are all the public comments tonight for our public hearing. Next, we have one voting item tonight, but there's no public comments on that. So then we will move to public comments on other matters, and we have Megan Schreiber.
Hello. My name is Megan Schreiber. I live in Ward One. I love our library and frequently use it, but I can't believe we're talking about a $12 to $13 million renovation to the library. In 2020, I testified that I was shocked that the library renovation had grown to close to $9 million. I urge the city to do what any homeowner or business would do if a project ran almost three times over the cost. They would ask, what do we really need and what can we afford? Today, as these costs continue to balloon before the construction has even begun, these questions are even more important. We pay approximately 50% more in property taxes than people living outside of Tacoma Park's borders. With home assessments skyrocketing, our city is becoming less affordable than ever, especially to people living on fixed income. We need to reevaluate what we actually need in this library. We need to rethink what the library space should be used for. We need to talk again with the librarians to find out what they actually need. Does it really make sense to have the computer space in the library? Doesn't this duplicate what is in the community center? And if it's not big enough there, let's revamp that at a far lower cost than have it in the new library. This is just one of the many things that need to be reconsidered. I also adamantly object to using American Rescue Plan Act funds for this. It's named the American Rescue Plan Act for a reason. It's intended to support urgent COVID-19 response efforts to continue to decrease spread of the virus and bring the pandemic under control, to replace lost public sector revenue, to strengthen support for vital public services and help retain jobs, and to support immediate economic stabilization for households and business and address systemic public health and economic challenges. The library renovation does not need any of these, not even close. While ARPA allows for cities to have some flexibility in how these funds are used, surely they never had in mind for using for cost overruns for a bloated library renovation budget. It would be immoral and frankly embarrassing to use them in this way. Please don't make us be one of those towns that puts costly design projects ahead of its most needy citizens. I can just see the Washington Post article about this now. I urge the city to reevaluate the library design. You must reevaluate rather than continue throwing money at it, and do not use the ARPA funds for this. We are better than this. We know better than this. Please do not do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Hubner is next.
Good evening. Can you see me? Thank you. Good evening. Paul Hubner, Ward Three. First, I want to thank the council for instituting a new process that will require that public comments and questions from residents will be answered at either the current meeting or the following one. So my first inquiry is about the police atrium renovation, a project due for completion by fall of 2019 and funded to some $427,000 during the FY19 budget. Was the cost of the architectural drawings for this project, how much? Where can the drawings for the earlier project, that project, and the current project be found? Three, was the earlier project ever put out to bid? If not, why not? If so, how much was the winning bid? Is the current project the same and/or what additions were made? What has happened to the $400,000 already allocated for the 2019 renovation project? And who is responsible for these two police atrium renovation plans? This city does not have a good track record of planning, estimating, or completing capital projects on time or on budget. The police atrium renovation is but one example. Another prime example is the construction of the city dog park, which began with preliminary estimates of $20,000 to $30,000 and mushroomed to a final cost of $250,000. My second inquiry is about the library renovation, initially planned as a $3 to $5 million project to cover replacement of the mechanical and electrical systems, install new roofing and windows, and achieve ADA compliance. Then a contracted architect convinced city staff and the council that it would be better to demolish the existing library and build a whole new one. Constructing a new building opened up floodplain issues that included accounting for the already-known stream and floodplain that existed when the community center was originally built. The architect's fees for this library renovation, which is now a total teardown and new building, will exceed $1 million in design alone. Who is responsible for this project? Why do we not consult the city's own professional structural engineer during design of the library? He should have been aware of the floodplain conditions about the library as the existing conditions created that need for the floodwalls that currently surround the community center. My third inquiry, and the central issue, is about the city's ARPA funds. Over $5 million, or 30% of which would be used to cover cost overruns for these two capital projects pre-pandemic. ARPA funds are federal tax dollars legislated to bring relief from circumstances of the pandemic to severely overburden residents. Is this reallocation of ARPA funds to cover cost overruns to pre-pandemic capital projects proper? Should this council allow staff who have crafted this bailout to literally take food and shelter from babies and elders to use these funds to cover project cost overruns?
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. That's your time. Thank you. Next, we have Ferd Hefner. Ferd, we can't hear you. You're still on mute. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, I'm Ferd Hefner, resident of Ward Three, elder at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church and co-chair of its Social Witness and Action Committee. You've all received a letter today signed by 250 Tacoma Park residents with a set of ARPA spending recommendations. These recommendations share the common denominator of addressing top pandemic-related needs of the community and most especially its lowest-income residents. I would make the following two points before you begin your final work session tonight on ARPA. First, those of us at the church who have been working on this issue since spring of 2021 and those who have joined us since from the community at large originally wanted more ARPA resources for the programs highlighted in the letter, but we have moderated our requests over time in light of your discussions. We are now requesting less than half the ARPA funds for these priority needs. As we say in the letter, we beseech you to include our recommended levels in your ARPA ordinance and do not go any lower on these crucial programs. Second, I want to be very clear. We're not speaking against other projects in the staff plan. There are many worthy proposals, though opinions on them and the particulars will vary. We are also not denigrating in any way the hard work that staff has done in preparing the proposals for your review. We very much appreciate them and their work. What we are saying is that you should not face this exercise in one in which all the proposals are left on the table, and many of them are then cut and then cut again in order to try to squeeze everything in. Instead, we believe that hard and difficult choices must be made. Not everything can survive in the end if you're going to be left with a prioritized and effective package. Therefore, we urge you to take the tough choices and scale back or eliminate some of the other proposals in the draft plan, including perhaps especially some of the construction and property-related proposals, no matter how worthy they may be. That is what it means to prioritize, and that, we believe, is what you must do tonight. Let me close by noting, as the Tacoma Park area clergy did in a letter to you earlier, that special unemployment and childcare benefits have run out, food lines continue, mental disorders are increasing, and many low-income people have drained their bank accounts and are in danger of losing places to live. And all of that is affecting Black and Brown people disproportionately. The faith leaders stated, and The faith leader stated, and I quote, "We are also mindful of the special call placed on all of us to protect basic human dignity and racial equity by addressing the pressing pandemic-related needs in our community," unquote. I hope you will keep that special call in mind as you deliberate tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Um, that concludes our public comments for this evening. And we will now move on to council comments. And just a reminder, we are also doing a three-minute limit on council comments. Councilman Kostic.
Evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, thank you to all the public commenters. It's really helpful to hear from everyone on redistricting and ARPA. Um, and Mr. Huber- Hubner, I know you had some questions, um, and I, um, I'm happy to follow up with you on those and, and get some answers for you. Thank you for sharing those. Just two announcements. Uh, one is I've been taking part in a fun, um, transportation initiative called Transpo Bingo, uh, which is an annual, um, event that started, I think, two years ago now. Um, it's a Twitter, uh, kind of a Twitter-focused, um, uh, bingo game, uh, where you take different challenges to, uh, use active transport and explore your community a little more in different ways. Uh, so that's been a lot of fun and um, it started last Thursday and goes through tomorrow, but if you haven't been participating or haven't checked it out, I encourage you to do so. Um, there's uh, I believe there is a wrap-up kind of happy hour celebration, um, that people are invited to join. Um, so you want to invite everyone to do that, um, as well. And then, uh, other update is that the Transportation Planning Board met today. And, uh, one of the topics that we talked about was moving forward on our, um, efforts to do more on climate change and to incorporate into our long-range transportation plan for the region, um, some climate mitigation efforts and goals. And so the next steps on that will be for each jurisdiction to fill out a survey that will, um, sort of identify where each jurisdiction, um, or agency, in the case of the DOTs, um, stands in terms of kind of what the climate initiatives we've already taken related to transportation as well as what we generally support. Um, and, and so it's things like, um, parking fees, uh, developments, uh, land use development focused around activity centers, uh, things like that. So right now we have an opportunity to review the survey and then that's the feedback we send to TBB staff will result in an updated survey and then, um, we'll be filling that out. So I, um, will send you all and on council, a, um, draft of that survey and would encourage you to take a look and send me your comments. If there are things we'd want to send suggestions to TBB staff for, um, that would be great. I would love, um, as well, uh, city manager to, to get some staff thoughts if, if there are any on, on that survey. Uh, if, if there are ways we can make it better or, um, make sure that our needs are expressed in it, that would be great. Um, so please, um, share those thoughts with me. Uh, I'll send you an email, um, with the information, uh, probably tomorrow morning. Uh, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Cercy.
Great. Um, two quick things. Good evening, everyone. And, um, first I want to start by saying thank you so much to all the people who came out and spoke, um, and public comments and also during the public hearing. Um, all of your feedback has been really, really helpful as we're, um, trying to tackle these challenging issues associated with redistricting and, and other issues, including the ARPA fund. So, um, thank you so much for all of that feedback. Um, two quick things. I want to thank, uh, the Director of Public Works, um, and the residents in the Hopewell Kentland. Yeah, Hopeland, Hopewell, Kentland and Larch, um, community. Um, we met last night to talk about the new sidewalk and traffic calming activities. Um, that will be taking place really soon over there. Um, one of the things that did come up and just to let residents know, uh, was about our ability to coordinate with Prince George's County. Um, and we were able to follow up with them and we, we do have a, a connection there. Um, so our hope is to provide you all with, um, some feedback in terms of real possibilities on how we may be able to connect some of the sidewalk project to, um, potential projects in Prince George's County on the Prince George's County side as well, which would be really, really great. Um, so thank you all for, for coming out last night and we will send out, um, a couple of emails suggesting some of the outstanding issues um, that were brought up. Um, another quick thing, just want to remind residents in the Hillwood Manor community, um, that, um, Hillwood Manor Playground construction will be starting sometime this week or will be starting soon. Um, so just be mindful that first we're going to have to start with the stormwater management efforts. Um, so you will likely see construction that's happening. The playground equipment will be installed in March. So, um, hopefully by the time the weather breaks, we will have a new playground for the kids to enjoy. Uh, but please just, um, let me know if you have any questions. Um, and we just ask for your patience as we, um, have construction that is taking place, um, near the playground area. And that is all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kova.
Thank you. First, I do want to express my appreciation for all the people who took the time to speak and also to send in written comments, but in particular, um, participating in the public hearing that we just had on redistricting and also those who commented on ARPA and we'll be getting into that whole range of issues just a bit later this evening when we take up both of those. So, um, the comments were, were helpful as part of that. I just had one other thing I wanted to mention very briefly. This past weekend, on, on Sunday, we had the, uh, Midwinter Play Day sponsored by Let's Play America. And it was, the weather wasn't great, so the outside activities didn't happen, but it was done indoors and I was pleased to see that that really seemed to work. People did gather, people were masked, uh, et cetera, and the one thing that I was, uh, particularly glad to be able to observe and maybe participate in just a little bit was, uh, watching our congressperson Jamie Raskin lead as he almost always does, the Simon Says group and, uh, that was in, actually in the council chambers. So sometimes soon maybe we'll have a chance to get back there, but I just wanted to express my appreciation for all the great work that Let's Play America and of course Pat Rumbaugh, AKA The Play Lady does, uh, uh, to put on those events. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I want to first thank the residents, um, that came out to the, uh, meeting hosted by, uh, Darryl Breithwaite to talk about sidewalks in Dummer Avenue. I think it was a, it was a great meeting. Uh, I look forward to, uh, their requests coming before council. Um, I really appreciate all the time that was spent going through all the questions and, and walking residents through, um, uh, the inst- potential installation of sidewalks on Dummer Avenue. Uh, I would like to thank everybody that came out and spoke today, uh, during, uh, resident comments. I really appreciate you taking the time to join us, um. And, uh, I know it takes a lot to come in and give remarks before council and other residents, but I would also like to take a minute to associate myself with, uh, Ms. Scribner's, um, remarks. I think they were dead on, uh, regarding the library, you know. Well, I've said this many times before that I have supported, uh, a library that costs two point five million dollars. Uh, that was under the leadership and, uh, direction of our previous mayor. Uh, and, uh, the council at that time, when we, uh, voted on it, and I think it was unanimous, uh, uh, thought that, uh, that the project would cost more than, uh, two point five million dollars. But it seems like, uh, this current iteration, uh, of the library is going to uh, cost everything we got. And if council does not make, uh, serious decisions quickly, uh, we are going to find ourselves in the same situation we were with the, uh, community center redevelopment. Construction manager is not going to save us. We cannot, uh, patch the holes fast enough to outrun inflation. So I ask all my colleagues, I know I only have three minutes, uh, to really strongly think about the direction of this library, uh, so that we can, um, reel it in and use this money for, uh, ways to actually help, uh, those residents that are in need in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, not seeing any other council comments this evening. I'll turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council, uh, just a few items. Um, I'll start with, uh, health and safety. Um, and just want to report back that, um, our mask mandate, I know there's a lot of conversation in the region, uh, and the state. Um, but we're, we're continuing, um, in, inside the city to continue the mask mandate to further notice. Um, when, when things continue to e- evolve and get much better than where they are now. Um, and along with that, um, in our partnership, we're, we're proud to say that our partnership with the county with the, uh, COVID nineteen testing at the rec center will continue through the, uh, month of March. Uh, so every Wednesday in the month of March, uh, we'll still be doing testing. Um, and we're still, um, through the partnership with, uh, the administration at the county, is still providing masks and, and rapid test kits, uh, to members in the community through our library. Um, the next piece I, I'll touch on, I, I appreciate the, the feedback, the continuous feedback from members of the community and, and mayor and council on, uh, ARPA. I, I won't touch too much into that. We'll get into that later tonight, but I will say that, um, you know, the ARPA plan and, you know, staff, we've been doing a lot of review and, and, um, modeling in the market and see what other jurisdictions are doing and how our staff recommended plan that council fared um, with others. And I will say that, um, the projects and plans that the staff recommended to council is no different than what we've seen, uh, across the nation as well as in jurisdictions close to Tacoma Park. Um, and, uh, there's, there's, you can look at the National League of Cities ARPA Investment Tracker, uh, to look at the infrastructure and the public space and facilities, which similar public space facilities that we have on our plan, uh, with the community center, library, others, or broadband or any other project we have is, is very similar to how other people are looking at investing their dollars. As well as, um, the results for America, uh, in partnership with Mathematica, a nonprofit that looks at how state and local, um, governments are using and investing their dollars, uh, through the use of evidence and data to help solve tomorrow's problems. Um, and they also took a wide swath of jurisdictions, um, that reported to the treasury last year and, and looked at how they're actually investing those dollars in their communities, which is very similar to what we propose. Uh, the last thing I would just say is, um, our staff recommended plan, very proud of the staff and, and the hours that we put in over the fall to be able to provide the recommended plan to council. Uh, we still have, um, a ways to go over the next couple of weeks to have a recommended plan that council approves. Uh, but I will say that ICMA, um, reached out in connection with Resource X, uh, one of the consultants that we use for our plan. Um, and our own deputy city manager, uh, was on a webinar today to talk about, um, how we actually prioritize ARPA resources through an equity lens and how to use equity um, to also in conjunction with the priority-based, um, budgeting. And, and she did a great job representing mayor and council in the organization. Uh, and there was over a hundred plus individuals across the nation that was on that webinar learning about how we got to where we are, um, in Tacoma Park, knowing that we're not finally done, uh, with the plan, but um, everyone is very enthused, uh, to hear about what we're doing here. A couple of other things I would just say is, uh, the state of Maryland provided our twenty twenty-two constant yield tax rate. Our current tax rate is fifty-three point nine seven cents per a hundred dollars of assessed value. Um, the rate that was sent to the city was, uh, valued to fifty-one point nine five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value for twenty twenty-two. And I just, just share that this proposed change in the tax rate may impact our goals and having a balanced budget. Uh, and making sure that there's no staff reductions as we, uh, build out our fiscal year twenty-three budget. Um, staff will provide council and the community a fiscal health presentation, uh, next month. And I'm still working in, on the early stages of developing my city manager's recommended budget. Um, that will, uh, be made public to the community at the, uh, early part of April. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, moving on to our voting item tonight, we have a resolution extending the term of the Task Force on Sustainable Banking and Investments. We received a request to, um, extend their, uh, term just by a little bit so that they could, um, finish up their work. Would anyone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Kova, do I have a second? Councilmember Smith, any questions about the resolution? Seeing none, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kova.
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes, and thank you to the hard-working task force.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
That's fine, yes.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Cercy.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. Great, that is our voting item tonight. Now we'll move, um, to our work sessions. Um, the first is on redistricting options and draft ordinance, and I'll turn it back to our city manager.
Okay, for this, uh, I will turn it over to the, uh, Madam City Clerk.
Well, we have Kate Durin here again to, um, present to you, uh, regarding the options you discussed last week and some new, um, with a few new tweaks that were, um, sent to her, so I will let her take it from here. Thank you.
Great, let me share my screen. All right. Uh, let, let's go to the beginning. How about that? Here we go. Okay. Um, so we're going to walk through the map options that we talked about last week. Um, and then we can have some discussion. I wasn't able to pull together more slides, um, in time, but we can definitely have discussion and look at the maps live if we want to look at other kind of pieces um, that I, uh, was emailed about this week. So we can get to that at the end. For anyone who hasn't seen all of our other presentations, we, uh, always talk about the criteria, out, given outreach update and then the map options. So the criteria, we've gone through a lot. I will show it here for a moment, um, without having to read through it again. Um, but these maps do, or you know, we're aiming to get them to, uh, that under ten percent. Um, five percent or less was what we were, you know, trying to aim for and some of the, uh, options we'll be looking at are close to that. And geographically contiguous, natural boundaries, we've kind of talked through this before. The redistricting engagement site remains the place to see the map options. Click on the, you know, the, uh, documents, look at PDFs, look at tables. So that's still the place to go. Um, that's on the Tacoma Park, uh, Maryland website. So I did an update to this slide. Proposed ward map submitted. We had five more maps, I think, submitted since January nineteenth. So this is kind of since the options A and B came out after options one through five. We're running out of signifiers here. So the number of comments submitted since the January nineteenth hearing has gone up to forty-nine. And that's not including something like public comments from this call. So those are the ones that are coming in through our surveys and through emails. Um, and then the number of comments for the entire process is now over two hundred, two hundred and sixteen. I'm going to say plus because we, you know, we get, um, counselors are kind of pulling feedback from multiple people together into emails to us, so it's, it's over that, which is amazing. Um, so just a note, we had put this, uh, you know, twenty-three of the twenty-five map specific comments submitted before, supported option B. And then eighteen of the twenty-two maps that's specific comments since these latest options support option Z. But the ones that support option Y, which you heard in some of the comments, are always referencing the Southwest Lego Creek Association and that, you know, wanting to keep that neighborhood on either side of Ethan Allen Ave. Um, so those are the ones that support option Y, um, in the comments. So option Y uses, uh, option A one as a start. Um, and option Y and option Z, um, you'll see a lot of repeats here. So Ward one, four, five and six are the same. So, you know, we're You know, we're really looking at differences between two and three, but there are some different, you know, kind of configurations we need to talk through. So we're moving the Hillwood Manor whole block toward six, that gives us more space in word two. The Long Branch Sligo blocks are in word two in both. The Jefferson Lincoln Carroll block is in word four. And then the potential is the Sherman Ave block, do we move that block where Sherman Ave is on the eastern side of that block? Do we move that toward four? So I came up with a couple scenarios for that. And then the other neighborhood moves I will show on the map, so yeah, they're they're basically say the same thing, so we'll look at the neighborhood moves now. This is a map that's also posted online, and we got new PDFs of maps where you can zoom in and look at the roads. Up, I think, yesterday and maybe updated today, so those are up that have more detail than this map, but this gives you the general. What, you know, what's going on? So the blocks are, you know, in this case, the blocks are as they are. And then we have the the homes here, I think there's six or seven homes here. That would stay with this block if we can, you know, key just keep them with the people that live across the street from them. Darwin Ave, we've talked about a lot with would go toward one. This is the Sherman Ave block with a question mark because we need to figure out what we want to do with that one. Currently, you know, in ward one in the previous options, but you know, wanting to look at that. This is the Woodland Ave east side toward three, and then this is the Conway Prince George's section. Toward two, so that's the trade off we talked about last time where if you have to do both to feel good. How many people you might be moving in either one, they kind of balance each other out. And then we have the people up here in word five, which is a question mark number of people that. You know, we might be able to add to word five. So anywhere from for the scenarios I did between ninety, which is there's already forty people accounted for there. And the last number I heard, you know, was a hundred and thirty people, so that's ninety extra people. And if you look at census twenty ten, that's two hundred and forty people. So let's say the top of the range is another two hundred people to match twenty ten, so I'm trying to give, you know, ranges of how many people. You know, you might be able to add in there. Okay, then B is a little less complicated because you're not splitting the Woodland Ave. And Prince George's Conway areas in this one. You're just following Ethan Allen Ave, and then those splits are moot because they're all in word three. But you have the same Darwin Ave, same this this area staying with, I think it's Jefferson. And then this, you know, addition of people and then talking through Sherman Ave. Area, so those are the options, and then the other question that I had was around. It really is around Sherman Ave, so it's sixty one people in that block. And word four is already high, and it's high because in these options we're adding in this Jefferson Carroll. Block to word four, so if we add that one in, now word four is high, so we're moving Darwin out, which is good, you know, it helps. But if we add Sherman in as well, now it's really high, and you'll see that in the tables when we look at it in a moment. So we're adding Sherman and this block, now four is high. So the questions were around, you know, the the homes on Sherman Ave, maybe on the other side of Sherman Ave. Going to word one, you know, so instead of the Sherman Ave block going to word four, what if we just took the homes on the other side? And put them in word one, that helps with board four overall population. And then another question was around Grant Ave, there's kind of a group of homes there as well. Could those move toward one instead? So those are the other considerations that I had heard about. You know, just trying to balance word four and one appropriately, given that this this block. Is currently in in word four in both of these options. Okay. We can come back to these anytime, so we have this spreadsheet that went out to everyone, I think, and it is on the website. So, you know, you would in a spreadsheet, you would be looking at this from left to right, but we're going to follow it down that slide. So if you start with, we've got option Y, I didn't want to call them Y A and B, they're just Sherman or no Sherman. So if you move Sherman, the Sherman move is moving it to word four, so you'll see that in this column here. And then otherwise, we're just keeping it in word one where it where it was in A and B. So we are moving Hillwood Manor to make space in word two, totally fine for word six. Lincoln Jackson is moving toward two, Jefferson Lincoln Carroll across the board, moving toward four. So really, Lincoln Jackson and Long Branch Sligo are blocks that we were reaching for for word five across Carol Ave. So we're putting those back, and then word five is is under. And so then if you do these, you'll see the deviation is fifteen percent or thirteen percent. So it is a two percent difference when you add Sherman into word four, it's a lot. Doesn't feel like a lot of people, but it ends up being a bigger. Move, so we have our deviation, you know, if we're just moving blocks, it's at fifteen and thirteen. And the reason why, and somebody pointed this out, the reason why these numbers are the same for option Y and Z. So if you see this, you know, these blocks here that are in word three. And then these blocks here that are in word two that kind of like trade places. Both of those areas have exactly six hundred and four people. So it's just the strangest thing that the two areas that we, and I looked at it a few times. The two areas that we are swapping between the two maps have the exact same number of people. So when we look at the overall population, you'll see the same deviations because we have the same number of people in word two and three in either case. So it's strange, but but true. Okay, so then moving down, we have requested neighborhood splits, so we have Darwin Ave. To word one, and then this is the Woodland Ave Conway Prince George's switcheroo. Between word two and three, this Jefferson Ave, it's five homes, so it's five homes there that would go with. The rest of that block, so they're not kind of an isolated group of five homes. That are, you know, otherwise associated with word five and not near any of the neighborhoods there. So those were the neighborhood splits that were in the maps, so that gets us down to these deviations. So we've got the mid-range, which is based on that two point six three people per single family household. And in the in these cases, these are all single family units. So we are able to develop a mid-range. And then develop a high end just for the sake of what if there's a lot more people there than we think. What's the most that could potentially be there? It's even too high for the most, but it it shows us what that range could be. So then we've got the neighborhood split, so we're still not under, and I would look at the mid-range as being the. More reasonable number than the high range. All right, then we get to word five, so the reason these are so high is because we've either moved Lincoln Jackson block. Out of word five, or we've moved the Long Branch Sligo blocks out of word five. And we've moved Jefferson Lincoln Carroll out of word five, so now it's really low, so it's really thrown off the deviation. And the reason we were doing that is because we were thinking about adding residents to the university. Because they are much lower because the students were not there, and typically they are there. And I even just heard about this on another project. Where they're having the same issue. Universities should have more people at them and they just don't for twenty twenty. So if we do the kind of conservative add ninety residents based on that number from the university. With the mid-range deviation, then this is kind of what this looks like. If we had two hundred residents, it looks even better because we're we're bringing five closer up to zero. Like we moved three, you know, two or three blocks away from word five in these scenarios. So we need more people in it, so the close, the more people you add, the closer it is to that ideal population, so that's why they really drop with two hundred residents. But two hundred isn't necessarily conservative. So, you know, it's thinking about what, you know, what do you think is the is the most likely, or I don't know. If we've been able to get any better information from the university, but you can probably assume it's somewhere between those numbers. So when we get to this, and then you've got the high end deviation as well. So the thing that I would. Kind of call your attention to, if we are being fairly conservative, we're assuming about the number of people that are. You know, the standard average number of people in the in these homes would be moving. And we assume ninety additional students at the university instead of two hundred. Then you have this ten point seven versus eight point six, so you can see when we add. Sherman over to word four, it really bumps it up like a couple percentage points, and that carries through the whole thing. So my recommendation, I guess, I don't want to say recommendation because I've got the disclaimer that Flo doesn't want to split blocks at all. But I would have you focus on, you know, options Y and Z for not moving that Sherman block. Because it just, it's just close to ten, you know, it's potentially. Close to ten, and I would say try to stay away from ten, even with these kind of ranges of scenarios. Where you've got this eight point six, so you're being conservative with the number of students in word five. You've got like a mid-range, you know, so I would say eight point, this eight point six here is kind of what I. What I focus on as a safer number. You know, because then from there, it goes down, you know, in any other situation, it goes down below that. But I I wouldn't go at to a scenario where you have a potential deviation that is over ten. Because I think that that's kind of what we're trying to do with this analysis is be like reasonably. What can we do that we can be fairly assured that we are not over that ten percent? And this one with the Sherman block moving does put it over ten percent. So that's how I would look at as we move through. If you are able allowed to add people to word five, we might get a better number, and you can see if we get a better number, a higher number. It goes down, so great, so we'll, you know, we'll look at the ninety and then we'll see if we can improve upon that. But yeah, so that's, I think that's kind of what I'm, what we're talking about here, and then. If you don't move the Sherman block and you add some more people into word one. You know, six or seven homes here, six or seven homes there. I did a back of the napkin, you know, kind of analysis for if you added those homes into word one. And that would also be fine, because it would be lowering word four and increasing word one, but they would kind of balance each other out. So if you wanted to look at those neighborhoods off of Sherman and Grant. That would still probably also be fine, so. Okay, that that's all that I have on your your options, but I think we're getting somewhere, so.
Okay. Go to Councilwoman Dibala and then Kostic.
Thank you, so. Let me see if I got this, so to make a long story short, if we add this proposed change. Sherman into either ward, we potentially go over the ten percent. And so you, and if in in the number, and the numbers come out this, that would be. Yeah, we potentially go over ten percent unless we. Assume a greater number of residents are missing in word five. And the numbers are the same with either Y or Z, correct?
So, that's helpful. If if you move the Sherman block into word four. It just kicks word four's population up a lot, and that might also be something where maybe your. You know, maybe your deviation's eight point six, but maybe, you know, what if word four is five percent of that or something? You know, do you want word four to be that much higher than all the other ones, you know? So I, that's would be my recommendation would be.
Although we we don't, what you just said about word four being dramatically higher than everybody else, we don't know that.
I could break them back, I actually have calculations, I think so, I could look and break them back out, let me look. Let me pause, well, pause this.
But I I I think, yeah, I just wanted to ask that clarifying question before we open your discussion.
I do have all of the calculations here, which is a lot. So four is. It depends on which, you know, kind of thing that we are looking at, but.
So you you had presented last week a package of two package exchanges, two. Excuse me, two packages of changes for Y and Z, both of which. Accommodated the vast majority of of neighborhood requests, the same of neighborhood requests. So let's just assume.
Yeah, so word four.
Taken care of, so this is an additional, and I guess in the first, in that first package, I thought we had assumed increasing. Increasing word five to recognize the undercounting, so that's why I'm a little confused, because I thought we already had done that.
I think we just don't know the number, so I haven't gotten an updated number on that, so that's why we put a range of. Ninety to two hundred, and it's really, I I wouldn't be able to sign off on it and say, yeah, go ahead, add people to census blocks. I I can't say, so that would be something that, and I can't remember, I know Jesse's been talking with the. City attorney, you know, about that, you can definitely challenge the census itself to change that number. But, you know, what that process is to, you know, add those numbers in. You know, I don't know if it's like. A resolution or something like, you know, like, I'm not sure what the process would be to say, yes, we would like to add those that numbers, those numbers in.
Yeah, I I guess I did assume that we had decided that we were going to add in to word five. And that we had a choice of these two numbers, the ninety and the two hundred. So anyway, the, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question in either Y or Z. If we accommodate word four, I mean, if we accommodate the Sherman move, we potentially. Run up against the ten percent, and I say potentially because. You, your your numbers still haven't added in the adjustment in word five, thank you.
They do, so in this bottom one, the ten percent means we've added ninety residents into word five. So it gets us closer, it does come down a bit to ten point seven percent, but it doesn't come down enough where. You know, I would feel comfortable saying, oh yeah, go ahead, make word four bigger, and it's, you know. It it's still potentially above ten percent, if you if you only added ninety residents toward five, it wouldn't be enough. So we would need more. Clarity or some kind of statement or something that is like, we can definitely use a hundred and fifty people, or you know, whatever it might be. Otherwise, if you're kind of being conservative with it and only adding in ninety residents, then you are still over the deviation with these changes. If you move the Sherman Ave block. Outside of that, you can see if you kind of move to the right, they all go down, like the more of word five you can add it. More people you can add in, word five is really the percentage that is very low, it's a minus five point eight percent. With only ninety residents, so the more people you can add in, the better, but you would need a justification for that number of people.
Are you done, Councilwoman Dibala? Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you, I have a couple of kind of general thoughts, but for right now, just focusing on this question. So I appreciate you looking into the Sherman move. I do think it's it's a more logical division to have Sherman be in word four than in word one here. And just to clarify, I think my my question about. About the house, moving some of the houses to word one or four, I think was, maybe I didn't explain it very well in my email. Because it wouldn't really achieve. Keeping the neighborhood together if those houses on the other side were moved into word one, because it really is the whole length of Sherman all the way to. So that wouldn't really solve that problem. But my question is, I I would love to be able to successfully do the move, I am also concerned about the deviation here. And I I'd love to hear, it sounded like maybe you had pulled up the numbers for what that means for the word four. the deviation here and I, I'd love to hear, it sounded like maybe you had pulled up the numbers for what that means for the Ward four population, the actual population number, because I think that is worth looking at in terms of how large the Ward four population would be versus the lowest number.
I have like the most complicated spreadsheet of, you know, what, as we move, you know, it's basically like the populations when you change the blocks, when you add the neighborhood splits, and then when you add in the Ward five folks and have different ideal populations. So Ward four would be at, let's see. So for if you did move the Sherman block into Ward four, so when we're talking about that ten point seven percent, five point four percent of that is above is Ward four and five point three percent below is Ward five. So you've got a ten percent difference between Words four and five. And then if you move the Sherman block back into Ward one, it goes down to three point three percent for Ward four being above zero. So it's about a two point one percent increase when you add the sixty-one people in, it's a two point one percent increase in the in the percentage there, so.
Okay, that's helpful. The other thing I had suggested was to sort of help offset that move, doing that census block break to move the houses on the other side of Grants that are currently in Ward four, that are on, I guess, the east side of Grants, moving those from Ward four into Ward one. Do you have any sense of what that population estimate would be, what that would do to these numbers, if that would help offset it at least to some extent?
Yeah, so I think that that would, I think because Ward four is, even if we didn't move the Sherman block, it's still at three point three percent above, which is not small, it still contributes to the overall deviation. So anyone that you could move out of Ward four, like especially if it was, say, ten homes at two point six people per home, right? So you've got twenty-six people moving back into, you know, moving into Ward one to stay with that group, that would bring that thirty-three percent down, you know, to or thirty-three, three point three percent, it would bring it down probably somewhere in the twos. And then Ward one is at one point one percent, so Ward one can bring in some people and that, that would be fine as well. So I think that's where, I don't know that that would offset moving the whole Sherman block, if that makes sense, up, because Ward four is already high, it would, I mean, it would help. But you might be at four something percent instead of five something percent if you then, you know, moved, moved some people into Ward one. But that Grant Ave area, it would help to move it into Ward one because they, that word is at one point one percent, you know, so. Or around one percent.
Yeah, I think given that, that explanation, it would be valuable both for the neighborhood and for the population number, so it seems to me to make sense to, to make that change. And I don't know, for my colleagues, if, if you wouldn't mind Kate going back just to the other map and sort of showing where we're talking about there.
I'm gonna zoom into the live map actually and, and show those houses. So it's Grant Ave, this is the Sherman Ave block we keep talking about here. If it moves into Ward four, and this map only has the block moves because I can't put split blocks into the tool, but this is the block we're talking about, potentially having to keep in Ward one just to keep that deviation down. But these homes along Grant Ave here, moving the, you know, kind of cutting it here and down, moving those into Ward one, you know, it would help, even in this instance where this is in Ward one, it would still help the deviation to move these homes into Ward one.
So we're talking about doing two more census block splits? Because all of Sherman would move.
So if, yeah, so if you moved this one into Ward four, it's very high. And then this, you know, if you move these into Ward one, okay, Ward four isn't as high, but it's still hovering around ten percent. And given that this is uncertain, you know, there's a, it's not exactly two point six people per home in every home that we are, you know, looking at. That I wouldn't, I wouldn't aim for something that gets you close to ten percent and just under if you have the two point six three people per home, you know, kind of, kind of number, so. I think that I would still steer away from moving this into Ward four, just because it's, it's too high and it ends up taking up almost half that deviation that you're trying to, you know, you're basically trying to aim for five percent. And then Ward four on its own would be at five percent, if that's another way to think about it, four or five percent, just in one, you know, board, so. But the Grant Ave, if you did split these homes and keep them in Grant Ave, if that was important, then that would bring Ward four down a little bit more.
Okay, thanks. I, I guess the other question, I, I'm very hesitant to, to break another census block, but I guess the other option would be to break that census block of Sherman and, and move those seven houses into Ward four. But that's, that's breaking another census block, which is, is certainly not ideal. I, I do think it's a little, in terms of the actual geographic divisions here and the way that the neighborhoods kind of connect with each other, I do think it's a little awkward to have the division between Ward one and Ward four be right in the middle of Sherman. And I, I can understand why, why folks are preferring to keep, keep those together if possible.
Yeah, and I was gonna say the same, you know, the more splitting you do, the less we know about the population totals. The more conservative you should be on making sure that you are getting below ten percent with these moves and the less certain we are about the demographics of, you know, the ward itself, because we don't know the, you know, how people filled out the census, their census data in those, you know, what, how they, how much they make up of that entire block, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I, I would like to go back to the map that you presented that showed the census block that didn't have any students. Uh, that was something you showed last week.
Uh, oh, yes, where these, where this little icon is kind of here, so please, let me move these guys out of the way. So, it's the, yeah, it's this block here, that's kind of an L shape or a seven shape, and then this one next to it with the two that.
Can you zoom in, please? My, my sight isn't.
Yeah, let me go over to the the map itself, because then I can zoom in. So this block has forty people in it in the twenty twenty census and then this one has zero. And previously combined, they had two hundred and forty-three in twenty-ten.
Okay.
So assuming they had the same level of enrollment as they did ten years ago, then, you know, you would expect to see two hundred or so people in these two wards and you're only seeing forty, in these two blocks.
Block census blocks. So you, you said that this has come up in another client's redistricting, how are they approaching it?
We just started with them, but their GIS person brought it up on a call as like, this might be a thing that's happening, but they didn't, they, I think they would, they want to see when we make the draft maps for them, if it, if it is an, an issue, you know, and in this case, it is, you know, because it really affects the shape of Ward five. If you are able to add people to Ward five, it basically keeps, oh, sorry, it keeps the same shape as it is currently. You know, it doesn't add any more people to it and adding into Ward five, anything we've, you know, suggested, it doesn't make sense. It's really just for that population balance, but like neighborhood wise, community wise, natural boundaries wise, there's creeks and major roads and everything, so. But they haven't run into, you know, they haven't run into an issue with it, but they did bring it up. And they said that it wasn't, they weren't allowed to fix it, you know, to, to request, you know, an update to it two years ago, because of the previous administration, I guess. And now you can challenge the census and so that was what they said, but that's, you know, it is something where you can't, if you had to use the census data and you couldn't, you know, kind of come up with another way around it, if you really had to use it, then I think you would have to challenge, like if you were doing congressional districts or something, I think you'd have to challenge the census itself. But yeah.
So you, your proposed count of, I think it was a hundred and eighty-three, that's the number I, I think that we should use for these, these two census blocks and however you want to distribute them, I, I think you guys could figure out the best way forward. I think that's a justifiable, justifiable number. I do not believe that the university has lost any of its student body, but I don't have any documentation to support that. But I think a hundred and eighty-three would, is a number that makes sense and, you know, if need be, we could put a footnote in the ordinance, explaining how we came to that number.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, thank you. Before we get into the broader discussion, I would just like to talk a little bit more about the two sections we've been talking about here. Number one, I, I think clearly we should attribute a number to Washington Adventist University and I, I don't feel like I can say what the number should be, but I, I think that ought to be factored in definitely and maybe what Councilmember Smith has just said makes sense there. As for the Sherman and Grant question, again, there may be a question about breaking up additional census blocks, but I, I would just like to ask if, for example, we went with a number in Ward five similar to what Councilmember Smith just mentioned, then to what extent at that point does moving that entire census block from one to four get to a reasonable level? Maybe just go back to that for a minute. So is that the, the far right number in the lower strip there?
It is actually, I would kind of focus on where it says with mid-range deviations, so that's assuming two point six three people per home that is moving across the board. The high end is very high, so.
So in other words, that one, I'm not saying it's perfect, but that one at least, if we use that assumption, we're within the deviation that we're looking for, right?
Right.
And then if the, now this then gets to the breaking up of additional census blocks, but if instead of moving the entire Sherman block, it was just that group of homes on Sherman, and I think it's only about eight or ten, and then similarly, maybe it's about twelve or so on Grant, so that's sort of, that would be like a trade-off. Does that help? And again, I, I know you're not, Kate, I understand you're not going to endorse the.
Well, I think that, yeah, the way to think about it, if you moved that, that group along, that's along Sherman into four, and then you move the group along Grant into one, and it's about the same number of houses. Yeah, the deviation would basically stay the same.
Meaning.
So it would be this with Sherman move, actually no, it would be no Sherman move, so it would be four point eight percent. And then you're moving some homes into four and some homes into one and it's about the same number, so it would be about four point eight percent still.
Four point eight percent would be pretty good then, right?
Right. And that's with, if you had two hundred people moving into Ward five versus ninety, so that's where you, this eight point six percent, you could keep it around there if you just kind of moved those two groups of homes.
Okay, not to get, not to get too bogged down in all these details, but setting aside and forgetting about Washington Adventist University for a minute, if all we do is move the, the homes on Sherman into Ward four and, and otherwise keep the rest of that block in Ward one, and then also pick up that Grant group, that increases Ward one at the expense of Ward four, right?
Yeah, but Ward fun, Ward one is pretty low. So it wouldn't, it would still, it would keep the deviation the same, the same, because Ward one wouldn't increase so much as to affect the deviation, it would be within, you know, that, that kind of range. It's close to one percent right now.
It would be lower than if we moved that entire Sherman, so-called Sherman census block into Ward four, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that to me seems like that, that's sort of a decent trade-off in the sense that, that all of Grant would be in one ward and all of Sherman would be in another ward. And, you know, I understand that that's, there are downsides to, to breaking them up, breaking up the census block, but it does seem there's some logic to saying, everybody on either side of Grant would be in Ward one, everybody on either side of Sherman would be in Ward four. I get why that might make sense for folks. So I, I lean toward if the numbers hold up going that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Any other questions? Kate, if we do what we were just talking about with Sherman and Grant, is that holds for both Y and Z?
Yeah. Because basically four and one are the same in Y and Z, so if you moved these, you know, sorry about the pop-ups, it's the tool, but these houses in Sherman and then these houses, or sorry, these houses in Sherman, instead of the whole block, you've moved these ones into four and these ones into one, then basically if anything, Ward four, there's a couple more homes there on Grant Ave, so Ward four would be losing more than it would be gaining, so it might even affect it in a good way, you know, it might be point one percent less, depending, I mean, probably not, it's only a couple homes, but it would still be in the right direction. But yeah, just keeping in mind that like the number for Ward five really matters for for what you're, let me go back here, for what you're looking at. So like these numbers, sorry, let's not look at the high end, but the mid-range numbers look really good if two hundred residents can be reasonably added into Ward five, but I don't know that we have further information from the university that says, yes, there were definitely this many, you know, the university said there were that many people there in February twenty twenty, before we sent them home, then you would know your number and you'd have like documentation for that. Because though that, it just, it gets better, you know, because they've just moved so many people out of five, but between Ward one and four, you know, it only really starts to affect it if you move that whole Sherman block into Ward four, then you've got four really high and five really low and it's.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to figure out what we're deciding tonight, because we're talking about this next week and so I, I guess the question is, is the changes that we discussed just now, they're the same for Y and Z?
Yes, yeah.
And.
So if you did no Sherman move or Sherman Grant split move, it's probably, those are about the same. So either the no Sherman move is like, don't move the whole block and it's eight point six, or if you traded ten houses here and there, it's probably still eight point six, so, you know.
Great. I guess the other question I have is what, and this might be for the city clerk. It, I think over the last couple of weeks, the council has expressed an interest to account for some of the students at Washington Adventist University and Councilmember Smith provided us with a number this evening. Is there a process we need to go through or something we need to do in order to do that?
So at this point, the only documentation that I have is the email that I got that said there are a hundred and thirty students there now. I, I don't have any further information. So I, I'd like, I think it would be helpful if we had some information about what was going on in February of twenty twenty.
So I guess I'm, I'm asking, where are we in this process and are we ready to vote next week? Because it's sounding like to me we're not ready to vote next week. Is that true or?
With the information that we have on hand now, all we have is that hundred and thirty number for, for Ward. For, for Ward um to add to Ward five. I mean, so it's adding ninety to Ward five.
So are we comfortable using that or do we want to delay the vote until? I guess what I'm asking is do, can we use that information? Um, or do we need to delay the vote and try and get more information?
I, I don't know, but um. I can't say definitively either way. I, it's up to council.
Will, will it be challenged? I mean, that's what I.
Yeah, I guess. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, yes.
We can ask the city attorney uh for an opinion.
Alright, so it seems to me we're not um ready to vote on this yet next week, so why don't we um push it another week? Um, and um ask the city attorney um for an opinion on that. Because I believe both maps, then both, both maps that we are looking at right now. Require us to assume population in Ward five.
Correct. Yeah, that's how we were able to move from option A one and B.
Right.
To the, this configuration is because we moved blocks out of Ward five from those options. And then assigned people to Ward five blocks.
Great. Alright, so I think, Councilmember Siemens, yes, go ahead. I just saw your hand.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of uh progress, could we at least tonight decide between Y and Z? Since the changes we've been talking about are not gonna uh are, are the same in both options?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Siemens. That was the, the next thing I was going to ask um members of council. Um, because that way we could at least move it forward to see if there are additional questions. Um, and uh. So, so putting aside, I think for the moment, um, getting uh the uh city attorney's. Um, advice on the addition, what we need to do to the additional um people for uh residents of Ward five. And putting aside the Sherman Grant piece that we just talked about. Um, is there, do people want to express a preference for either maps Y or Z? Moving forwards, we, at least we can narrow it down to one map and then look at the Sherman Grant um issue more closely. And I have Councilmember Siemens. Is that an old hand, Councilmember? That was an old hand. Okay, then I have Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. Um, and thank you for the discussion about Grant and Sherman. I think it's, it's useful to consider that those two trade-offs. I think that sounds like a good plan. Um, I have a couple of comments. Uh, first of all, I just want to acknowledge that. Regardless of whether we used, used map Y or Z, this process does a lot of change to Ward three. And I think that's important um for, for council and residents um to understand. And, and so, um, you know, I, for one thing, I, I would prefer to not split more, um, more census blocks. But I do think, um, given the, the discussion we just had about Sherman and Grant, um, uh, those, that whole neighborhood is being split into. Um, basically moving from Ward, Ward three into either two to three entirely new wards. Um, going into, some going to Ward one, some going to Ward four, some going to Ward two, um, potentially in map Z. Um, so just want to acknowledge that, um, and I, I appreciate everyone's um patience and understanding. As I've had a lot of neighborhood association meetings and talked with folks, which have been really, really useful to me. Um, and I, I think people are, are all providing their feedback and are, are being pretty flexible in terms of where their neighborhoods end up being. Uh, what I have heard from people uh in Ward three is primarily keep neighborhoods together where possible. Um, and don't split down the middle of the street for neighborhoods um that have street-based identities like Sherman and Grant. And some others. Um, most of the residents I have heard from in Ward three support map Z. And I've given a lot of thought to the different options um between map Y and map Z. And I, I see some pros and cons to, to each of them, but based on the feedback I've heard from us, from residents. And what I've seen, um, just looking at these maps and, and considering a, a variety of options, I think that map Z is the better one. To me, it's, uh, it keeps a more logical shape to the ward, um, to, to our ward in general for Ward three. Um, and, and other wards in the city. I think it also um helps to reduce some of those census block divisions. Which I know we're just talking about because there might be a few additional ones coming into play, but it does um. Resolve some of the issues with a few others that are um needed in map Y to keep neighborhoods together. Uh, one of the things I also think is valuable about map Z is that it minimizes the difference, um, the distance between kind of the farthest tips of the ward. So right now, Ward, Ward three has um folks up in my neighborhood, um, kind of on the farther northern tip. Uh, who are quite far away from people on the farthest sou- southern tip. And the, the issues and concerns and orientations toward which, you know, kind of main thoroughfare or commercial district people frequent. Are very different in those different areas. And to me, I think um, uh, the, the shape of the map in, in map Z. Helps to resolve some of that for Ward three. Um, I also like, and I, I appreciate the, the feedback from the Saskia neighborhood. Because that was not something I had, um, I had considered, but uh in, in other parts of the ward, particularly for Ward four, for Ward three. I like that map Z has more of the word divisions along the, the more major streets. Uh, because I, I, as someone who lives on, on Carroll Avenue, I see myself frequently trying to talk to neighbors across the street. Who I can't hear because there are cars passing by and it's just loud and noisy and we tend to um associate with people on our side of the street a little more. So where there have to be divisions in the middle of streets, I think it makes sense for that to be um along a more major busy street. So I would support um map Z and um also just say, you know, not, not every neighborhood will um get exactly what it wants. In, in whatever map we have, um, but I, I think we're all friends in, in the city and we all talk to each other regardless of what word we're in. And so I, I hope everyone will still feel they're connected with their neighbors regardless of which map we end up choosing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members want to express an opinion between maps Y or Z? Councilwoman Dibala.
I think you're muted, sorry. What was that earlier, a comment about two years in, you'd think we'd have this right? So, as I said last week, um, I think it makes sense to look at the bigger picture of um undercounting. And, and I'm good with whatever um number makes the most sense to. Uh, adjust for Ward five in either case. Um, and going with ninety seems a little low, but we will see what we get on that. Um, uh, for many of the reasons you heard tonight from Ward two residents, I, I. Do prefer option Y. Both options accommodate, with the exception of Sherman. All the individual neighborhood specific requests and block specific requests we got. Both, both options take care of Woodland and Forest Park and Long Branch Ligo, which were important to me. So thank you to everybody else on the council and to the consultants and staff for working that out. Both have the same impact on population deviation. Um, what has been pointed out to me. Um, is that in earlier comments that went to the consultant, for whatever reason. This notion of the broader Saskia neighborhood was perhaps overlooked. Um, and, and the historic, the historic background to me, having lived here for many years, you would have thought I would have known this, but I didn't. Um, was persuasive that um historically Prince George's face facing neighborhoods. Um, want to, want to be together and we still see impacts in inequitable infrastructure, inequitable sidewalks, et cetera. So there's still some catching up to do, not to mention Ethan Allen and, but um. So I favor keeping the, if, keeping the larger Saskia area together, which is what option Y does. Um, for Ward two, whether it's a rectangle or a square, they're both compact. Um, and so that doesn't, that doesn't influence me one way or the other. So that, that's um, that's in a nutshell what I, what I wanted to say tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Council.
And I did forget, uh, of course, for all of the people in both wards two and three who've commented, who've written, who've emailed. Who've stopped us on the street, plus the folks who've come out to public hearing tonight. Um, I've, I'm just pleased that there's so much engagement in an issue of long-term importance to the city.
Thank you. Um. Anyone else on council wanna, Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you and thanks to uh Flo and Kate in particular for all the work. Uh, Kate Doran is, Kate Stewart also, um. I, I think one of the complications is that. The various criteria, I, I mentioned this previously, that are in the charter and in the resolution that we adopted. Can kind of work against each other in some ways. So in the charter, we have um geographically contiguous natural boundaries. And, and not uh gerrymandering for, to feed or, or election. And then in our resolution, we have compactness and um geographic, geographic contiguous natural boundaries. Um, some emphasis on trying to protect neighborhoods and also the. Not engineering it so that someone is defeated or, or potentially elected. And so depending on which way you go in some of those directions, you sometimes get one and not the other and vice versa. And I think. At the beginning, we said and we looked at this from the point of view, well, let's try to keep the wards the way they are. You know, if you're starting completely over, you probably wouldn't do that. You'd just come up with, with a map that people would decide. So we started from the perspective, let's keep the wards together and then go from there. And it's harder with some of the wards than others probably. And as I mentioned, and I think my statement was quoted by someone, not a Ward one person, the documents that I had sent out. Uh, I do come down on the side of uh Y rather than Z. Um, partly because I, I, I think one of the things we, we should look at, look at in, in both the charter language and the. Um, resolution language and I realize it can be interpreted in more than one way is um. Whether the structure is set up so that uh council members no longer live in their district, if a lot of people want to vote for them. That's a decision that we're, we're making to say those people wouldn't be able to vote for a person they might want to. Now, none of us, none of us might be here. By the time the election rolls around, who knows which of us decide to want to run, even if we can. That's not known at this point. But um, I think to me, if we're willing to say, in general, we want to keep all these wards together. Not, not so much because of individual neighborhoods, because they'll be tried to address, but just because the wards and wards. I, I prefer to give people a chance, if, the majority of people anyway, to have an opportunity to vote for. Someone that they currently have and as opposed to making that impossible. I, I, I hear the other side. I recognize that people feel strongly from the other point of view. Um, I weighed both of those notions. I come down on the side of, of preferring Y, thinking through all of it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Anyone else, Councilmember Sears?
Okay, um, thank you so much. Um, you know, one of the things that I've um thought about mostly is. What makes the most sense in terms of not just the overall map, but how, um, again, we're not going to be able to solve all of. Of the concerns that residents have raised, but to what extent are we able to um keep those communities that are. Um, uh, already formed together and organized together. Um, and I think both options make an attempt to try to do that. Um, but beyond that, I like to think about the fact that, you know, to, to Councilmember Kovars. We shouldn't make a decision based on, you know, whether or not um we're here now or who would vote for us. You know, it has to be about um the facts of um the data that's available. And trying to make the best assessments that we can um to accommodate as many of the requests that are needed. But I'm, I'm really held to the idea of the compactness and making sure that we're creating. Or, or voting on a map that meets the most of our criteria that we've established and best criteria. Um, addresses the bulk of the requests that have been made in order to try to keep as many. Um, of the neighborhoods together as possible. Um, and, and, and not necessarily taken into account um the impact that um. It may have on, on me or my colleagues in terms of our ability to be reelected. So taking all of those factors into consideration, I lean more towards map Z, I think it's still Z. Um, because I, I think that it does um the most of that. Um, I would like to just get that validation from the attorneys that, you know, we're not. Creating any um uh problems in terms of our, you know, adherence to the code. And, and that our ability to, to make this decision is, is one that's appropriate. Um, given the, the changes that it would have in terms of our incumbents. But um, and looking at the maps, I think that, that Z kind of fits the bill a little bit more um than Y.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Siemens or Smith, would you like to weigh in or?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking for uh the right button.
Okay.
Whether it was the Y or Z button I should push. I um, uh, again, this is a, a difficult thing. Because uh I think Flo and, and Kate in particular has done a super job of uh. Uh, going through all the various criteria and, and uh, and then making all the tweaks that, that we've. Uh, talked about and that uh, you know, really striving to keep neighborhoods together. Um, and I think uh, as I listened to the discussion tonight. Both from the public uh comments and also from um what uh. Uh, Councilmember Kostic and Dibala has said, um. You know, the, the decision between Y and Z really comes down to which uh, you know, which keeps the neighborhood groups together. And uh, either way we'll go, we're, we're going to be right or wrong, right and wrong. Uh, because it uh. The two choices, uh, you know, affect different neighborhoods in different ways, so. Um, at this point, I'm uh, I'm leaning towards Y. But I look forward to hearing uh Councilmember Smith's uh and the mayor's uh take on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, would you like to?
I, I, you know, before I can articulate my position on uh Y or Z, I'd like to see them on the screen. Um, first, uh, second, that, you know, my, my vote and. And what I'm supporting, uh, you know, primarily has to do with Ward five. Uh, you know, I can't speak for. Uh, my colleagues and I don't think it's proper for me to uh speak for my colleagues, especially. And they will um see big changes uh to their wards. I, I guess I, I just don't have that hubris. Um, can you bring up the uh option Z?
Can you see that one?
Yes.
This one is the, yeah, this one is the, yep.
And so it, I guess it looks like Z has uh, um, you know, the fierce changes in it. So I think I would support option Z for Ward five residents. But like I said, I can't speak to how these decisions will impact my colleagues. They need to do that.
So Ward five is actually the same in both of them, so I don't know if that.
So I don't know. Alright. So I don't know. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, so I'm, I lean towards map Y based on the, you know, the comments I've heard from residents. I want to thank them for all of their input and particularly Councilwoman Kostic and Dabala for doing all the meetings that you have done on this and gathering input. But looking at particularly the Saskia area, I do think it's important to keep that neighborhood together. So I'm leaning towards map Y for us to move forward with that. But I think this is pretty close, four to three. And what I would propose, if the city clerk is amenable to that, that we postpone the first reading next week to give us a little time to check in with the city attorney to make sure that we can make the assumptions regarding the students at Washington Adventist University and that he can also take a look at what appears to be the map that the majority of council is leaning towards, which is map Y, and make sure there's no issues with that in following the criteria that we have set out in our charter. Or are there any other questions that council needs to address before taking a vote? That make sense? Cool. Um, I think the only other thing that's hanging out there is the Sherman area grant.
To ask about that, I was like, we have one more decision. If we could just look at this again real quick, the just from comments, so it sounds like moving the entire Sherman block because it puts you in this kind of potential, you know, 10% zone. And if you move the whole block into Ward Four, there's, there's people on the other side that are being moved out of their ward, that kind of thing. It sounds like we might not want to move this block into Ward Four, and then the consideration would be the grant, you know, the kind of Sherman homes to Ward Four, just the Sherman side of that block to Ward Four, and then the grant ones to Ward One, and then it should be still close to 8.6%. If, if anything, it would be 8.5%. It would go down a little bit. And maybe those are your considerations versus the whole block or not the whole block. It's do we move the grant in Sherman Homes or not? That would be like your decision. And then you're not near the 10.7%, you know, area there. And that's what the conservative kind of 90, adding only 90 residents to Ward Five, you'd still be in an 8.5 area versus the 10.7 area. So.
I guess I would, Councilwoman Kostic, is there, what are the feelings of the residents in the area, your recommendation on?
Yeah, I think that makes sense to, to do those two splits and move the residents from just the Sherman side into Ward Four and just that grant, other set of grant into Ward One. And then we have a better deviation at 90 residents, or if it is more like 200, we have maybe better. So that seems logical to me.
And that side of grants that we would, in that case, would move toward one are currently in Ward One. So they would snow that.
They are actually in Ward Three.
Oh, they're in Three. Oh, yeah. Oh, then I was, sorry, I was thinking of a different area. There's a lot of areas to think about. Okay.
There are, no problem.
But they would be with the, instead, they would be with the homes across the street in Ward One, in this case. Okay.
Who they are already with. So it keeps that neighborhood together.
Okay. Any objections or are folks okay with that move? All right. So let's make that move. So we have now.
If I'm gonna take out the, the with, with Sherman move is going to turn into not the block, but the, you know, basically this piece will come out and it will end up in neighborhood splits instead. So and then it'll be a set number of homes. And I'll probably frame it like this, where it's the trade off between the two, because it's pretty close. And I can update this for that.
Okay, great. So it looks like for the moment, we have map Y with the change we just discussed, and we'll have the city attorney take a look at that and the process so far. And then if there are any questions that we need to address, we can do that next week before moving to the first vote, which would be on now, which date, March 2nd, I guess. So, sound good? Councilmember Kovar?
That sounds good, but can we also, at an appropriate point, it doesn't have to be until well after we finalize this, look into what's required, not to challenge any of the counts, but just to see if it's possible to petition for changes in any census blocks, so that some of the really oddly shaped ones, I know it's 10 years from now, but it wouldn't be bad to look into that and maybe see if we could get a few of those census blocks changed as something that's a little more realistic. So some, some of the weird outliers.
And Kate, I, I know you've worked very hard for us and we very much appreciate all our work, but I do know you have mentioned at different times, particularly, I think there's one census block in Ward Four that you said is kind of, is huge.
People in it, which thankfully, for the most part, except for that Darwin Ave area, it, you know, it is all within Ward Four, but you know, you don't know what the population will be. It's just very big and you can't, you know, you can't just split it down the middle and move it to two different districts, because then you really wouldn't know the demographics. We're talking about a few homes here and there, but then it would really be a big question mark. So there's a couple other blocks, I think, that are 500 plus people. So, you know, if they're, if they're closer to 100 to 200, and that's what you're moving around, it's way easier to do, you know.
But I think if there's, if you had a list of the census blocks that you're looking at, that you're saying like, this doesn't actually make sense. And
Yeah, just that they're so big.
And, and 10 years when the city is doing this again, it would be good to not have to deal with that. That would be helpful to have so that we can look in the process of challenging or asking for an amendment. Um, looking to the city clerk, is there anything else you need from us at the moment?
No, I think we're good. And I, I'm actually glad you're gonna wait the extra week. So I, I think it makes sense to do that. So.
Great.
Good.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you again, Kate, for all your work and for all the input that residents have given us. I think as you heard from public comments tonight, there wasn't necessarily agreement from all the public commenters on which map to go with, but I think there was a general sense of gratitude for the process and how we were able to incorporate people's preferences and their feedback throughout. So I thank you very much, Kate, for all the work and also to our, our city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, for all of that. Great.
It's been an interesting, you know, puzzle to kind of work through. So it's, you know, and figuring out all the pieces and having a giant spreadsheet of all of these numbers, but I should be able to make that update really quickly for those two, you know, based on the number of homes in those two areas and get that back out to you tomorrow. So.
Thank you. Terrific. All right. Then we'll move on to our next work session. I'll turn it back to the city manager to discuss the ARPA spending plan and budget amendment draft ordinance.
Awesome. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we, we come to the period over this last month to finally get to a place where council will be able to give staff direction on the final recommended plan for ARPA. We've had, including tonight, six council meetings so far, a community meeting and about 90 questions and detailed answers back to council over this last month. So I've been pretty busy getting to this point, but we're, we're excited. Tonight, I'm going to ask Ms. Clark to bring up the reconciliation Excel spreadsheet that we had last week. Since our last meeting last Wednesday, we provided council an updated staff response on a updated plan for each of the items that we had in the recommended staff plan. And wanted to open up to council and mayor for a comment on each of those projects and see if we can get some commitments tonight. So staff can begin moving forward on a actual spending plan. So Ms. Clark, if you can bring up the reconciliation sheet. When Ms. Clark is doing that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to you if, if you want to lead council in going to each of the projects. I'm sure that council has different proposals for each of the projects and we can take them one by one.
Okay, I, I just wanted to, before we do that, I just wanted to clarify the columns here just for everyone one more time. So here, the first row here are the totals that council had tentatively agreed on on February 2nd. Here are, as discussed last week, the combination of cuts to accommodate the library cost increase as proposed by staff, and this reflects the revised totals. And then this is the column we're looking to fill in tonight. We pre-filled it with the same numbers as the staff proposed, but these old, these may or may not change tonight. Just, just pre-filled it for you, but this is the column that we're working on this evening.
Okay. Great. All right. I thought you all were gonna do this. So I'm happy to walk council through this this evening. I just wide my screen a bit. So are there any, oh, wait, I see a hand up. Councilmember Kovar?
I didn't mean to interrupt your introduction to what we're doing. I apologize if that's what happened. I, I did want to make a, a general con before we got into the program, like program discussion, but I can wait until you've finished the introduction.
Yeah, I'm, I don't have any introduction. I was just gonna walk through it. I thought staff was walking through it tonight. I'm happy to do it.
I, I guess I had, I had two questions then. One is on the resolution itself, which the draft is posted on, on the website, and I had a a, a question about that. And so I just wanted to ask you, should we do that beforehand or at the end? And then secondly, I just had a slightly bigger con before we start going through each of these. So I can do that in either order or we can wait until.
I don't know what your question is. It's hard to know. What, so why don't you ask your question and we'll see. The city manager, W C manager can respond.
I'm not trying to be mysterious. I apologize for that. So I would say, first of all, and the resolution itself, it accompanies the, the list in section five, it says the council, the city council will review the ARPA spending plan on an annual basis as part of the regular budget process and make adjustments as necessary, depending on the pace and impact of the ARPA project proposed herein. And I think a number of us have indicated that we think that the, or we would support having more frequent reviews. Certainly not, to me, annual. And so at the appropriate point, I would like to, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but offer a change to that to make it, say, for example, quarterly or, or, or some more frequent period for that review. So that's one, that's one thing. And that can be done, I suppose, when we take it, when we actually go on it next week, but I'll just mention that. And then the other thing is, and I, and I really do want to express my appreciation for the, the letter that Fer Hefner spoke today earlier, organized and signed by a number of people in, in the community. And to say that I do agree with, with a number of those points. And so my view is that we, we should restore some, some of the reductions that the staff have proposed. The staff proposed them for perfectly understandable reasons, given that we're still trying to get a handle on the, on the library spending. So I'm just saying upfront, what I would like to do is increase the numbers along the lines of what I said in the meeting last week and also what's in the letter that the, the groups submitted. And then I'll also be proposing as a trade off mostly for that, maybe it doesn't quite add up, that we not go forward from now with the community center project, so-called atrium project. So that will just explain why I react the way I do to the various programs that we're going through now. But I just wanted to step back and give that holistic look at it. And thank you for indulging.
Thank you. Um, I guess I'd ask the city manager and the W C manager if members of council have changes, how do you want to? I know the last time we had Mr. Powers do his magic with Excel, I, I just don't, I'm just requesting how you would like to handle that this evening.
So I think for any language changes to the ordinance, we, so we already received track changes from Councilmember Dabala, and if other council members have tracked changes, for example, the quarterly versus annual, if you send those to me, then I can combine them and we can see where there's, you know, what, what changes are proposed is one way to do it. At least for the language of the ordinance, but we did want to start with the reconciliation sheet. And I'm running it. And yes, Mr. Powers is not on tonight, but I think I can handle the the cell changes.
Just one other question, and, and I'm not trying to slow things down. I apologize if it seems like that. In addition to the dollar amounts for each of these, there is a separate exhibit which lists the various projects and has a brief paragraph description of what they consist of and, or what the proposal is for what they were consistent of. So if we want to suggest changes to those, what in your view, Ms. Clark, would be the, or may would be the time to do that as we go through each one now and talk about both the money and what they consist of or afterwards. I'm fine either way. I just want to understand what we're, how we're going to be proceeding.
I'm sorry, I think we can make notes here in the sheet. If it's, if you believe you're changing the intent of the project, I think a lot of the changes that I've heard discussed are more language clarifications as opposed to changing the, the project implementation.
But as each one comes up, if we have a concern, we should talk about it at this time while we're going through them. It sounds like what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
What I would like to, to, the, the process to go forward is first to look at these revised changes, do a hand vote on whether or not we want some or all to go back to the initial number that as a council, we have decided on February 2nd. And then we can take care of the business that Mr. Kovar and some of my other colleagues might have before the council.
Okay, um, so Councilmember Smith, just to make sure I understand, you would like to look at the which, I guess, the, the two-two council totals and get a hand vote on whether or not people would be keep those totals and then move forward from there. Is that correct?
That's it.
Great. Um, thank you very much for that suggestion. If there are council members who would like to go back to the February 2nd council totals and keep those as what we would have moving forward, please raise your hand. See, I can't know if I can see everybody. Hold on one second, council member.
I didn't, I didn't understand the question. I apologize.
Um, Councilmember Smith asked that we take a hand vote on whether or not council members supported going back to the February 2nd council totals. So that is the first column, if you can see on the sheet, and to use that as the basis for moving forward on the distribution of the ARPA funds.
And so just to be clear, as a group or one by one? Because I agree with.
No, I think Councilmember Smith was requesting a hand vote as a group. Is, am I correct, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So let's see if I can see everybody now. Sorry, I can't, I can't see everybody, all the council members and the, um, the chart big enough, but I think I have everyone now. So I have Councilmember Smith raising his hands. Anyone else want to go back to the February 2nd council totals? All right, I'm not seeing any other hands. So then, given that, we will proceed with looking at the, go, going, I'll go through each of the projects and if people want to make looking at the, going, I'll go through each of the projects and if people want to make changes, we can take, I guess, we could do hand votes at that time for the change. And if a change depends on another change, we can hold it until we discuss that. So I see the first items on Wi-Fi hotspots, laptops, workforce development, grants for small businesses. Those all stay the same, correct? Yes. So are we good with those top four things? Any changes to those? Seeing a thumbs up from Councilmember Siemens. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. And then, so those are all good. So we'll consider those good to go. Next, on scholarships, there was a staff recommendation to reduce scholarships by $200,000 for a total of 300,000. Any changes there? Are we good keeping that? Hey, I'm gonna say we're good keeping that. Next, on the municipal broadband, I believe Director Jones went back and said that we could reduce that by the amount here for a total of 40, $400,000. Any changes there? I see none. We'll continue. And Councilman Kostic, I don't see you, so holler if you have a change. You're eating. Okay, that's perfect. Just, I don't want to miss you. All right, next is emergency rental assistance. There's no change there. It stayed at $500,000. Any comments on that? I'm not seeing any. The next item was on the energy efficiency upgrades. Weatherization, there was a suggestion to, oh, thank you. There was a suggestion to reduce that by $500,000 to keep a total of 500,000. Is there a suggestion on this? I see Councilmember Kovar and Dibala have their hands raised. Councilmember Kovar, you're first.
I'd like to bring that back up to where it was originally. I think it's an important program. I think it meshes both how one of our important climate change goals as well as being something that could make housing more affordable for residents in the community. So I propose restoring that to the 1 million.
Okay. WC manager Clark, maybe what we should do is just highlight that, that that's, that's one with a change. Since it's and Councilwoman Dibala, are you also suggesting bringing it back to the 1 million?
I was gonna suggest that we not decide this until we get a little further down the list. It pains me to reduce several of these items, as I'm sure it does everyone. But particularly on the multi-housing, family housing rehab and the energy efficiency upgrades, they speak directly to the energy burden of the very people that we're trying to to help here, both in the short and in the long term. And I just want to point out that in the first round of energy efficiency grants, there was $285,000 to spend and it was $678,000 of legitimate requests. So I don't think there's any question that cutting both this and the multifamily housing in half is cutting into legitimate demand. And that concerns me. But I think that we have, have some other areas to discuss first. So I was gonna suggest that we, we wait on this one.
Councilmember Smith?
I have a question for staff. So with the multifamily rehab fund, would there be overlap with energy efficiency? So if, if a landlord wants to make improvements to, you know, their HVAC system, appliances, if there isn't enough money in the energy efficiency fund, can they pull for the, from the other fund?
Absolutely. Our sustainability manager and HD director developed these proposals in conjunction in tandem, and they're looking at potentially doing a universal application process to make sure that the two funds are in are working well together.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So why don't we say, all right, so we're gonna hold that and then on the incubator, there was no change there. Anyone want to make a change to the $500,000 for the incubator? Councilmember Kovar.
Not for the dollar figure. I think the dollar figure is fine. I mentioned this before and I think there was some, I don't want to overstate this, but I thought there was some openness to this idea in the part of staff, since this is something that requires us to identify partners that we would work with together in the development of this project. And that just strikes me as something that's not going to be easy to do. And I'd propose that if we don't have the partners identify, you know, we have to obligate the money within four years. We don't have partners within a set time, say, two years, that we would stop this one, make the money available for some other purpose.
Councilmember Kovar, just to jump on that, I was gonna actually, if this moved forward in the ordinance, gonna suggest some language about checking in on this one sooner, just to get a progress report on what, so that if we did decide to reallocate money, we would have that. So I also agree with you not to change the dollar amount, but to put language in the ordinance about checking in on this one sooner. Let's see, Councilmember Smith?
No, this is once again for staff. Regarding the incubator, is there a preference going to be given to those businesses that are not covered by any type of business association in the city? Or what is the ideal applicant for the the crossroads business incubator? And before you answer that, I'll just say that I don't think it would be, it's gonna be difficult for you guys to find a partner to do this, because people are doing this all the time in this region.
Sure. So this will target, so it can serve any business in Tacoma Park. And, you know, whether they're in an association or not. Was that your question, Councilmember Smith?
Yes, but if there's any preference given to
I mean, we're trying, we're trying to secure a permanent location here. So I think that'll be, you know, who the tenants of that property end up being, I think we're, that'll be farther down the line. We're just trying to get the actual, acquire the property with partners.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mental health crisis counselors, oh, sorry, I saw, I just saw hands. Councilmember Dibala and then CRC, apologies. Councilman Dibala, if you're talking, you're on mute.
So as I was starting to say, I love the incubator idea and I see the importance of it to the to the residents and small businesses in that area town. I, it is just, it's just an idea so far. And so I agree that we should check in, I would say, within two years from now to see how it's going. And if it's not, to be able to potentially move the, move the funds to another, another area.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman CRC.
Real quick, I just want to specify what we heard Director Cross mentioned before, is that we do have quite a few businesses that are tied to things like various farmers markets and the like. And so that idea is to kind of create new opportunities for businesses to have storefront property within the crossroads areas. So to Councilmember Smith's question around, is it limited to those businesses that are already covered by another, another business association? I think the idea of this project was really to try to bring in folks or to kind of cultivate folks who are not yet at the point where they have a storefront. So to kind of create that vehicle for folks to, to kind of get in, particularly in the crossroads area, given the purple line. So I think we can definitely ask Director Cross to kind of give us more information about that. But in conversations with him, I know that 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 is the type of business that we're trying to cultivate through this project.
Thank you.
And the question I have is, what about home businesses? Does it cover those folks or is it just people at the crossroads?
Councilwoman CRC is nodding her head, yes.
Yes. Yeah, because a lot of the businesses that are tied to, I know like with the Crossroads Food Network, there, some of those businesses are actually working out of their homes right now, like, you know, catering and things out of their homes and other things. So the idea is to kind of grow them up, those types of businesses.
And as Councilmember Kovar mentioned before, there are short descriptions of each of the programs attached to the ordinance. And so if folks have a chance to look at that as well, before we vote on the ordinance to make sure the language is reflective of what you want, that would be helpful. Okay, moving on to mental health crisis counselors, we have $600,000 there. That is no change. Right, Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, just on that one, it talks about that the program would be embedded in the police department. And I think there's been a lot of discussion about how that might not be the case, or we might not want that to be the case. I've proposed that that not be the case. Again, that's a language change, not a dollar change for me.
Councilmember Kovar, with, with the location where the mental health crisis counselors would be, it's a space allocation and the space allocation that they would go would be in the same area where we're proposing the community center renovations. And it would be a similar area to our conversations we've been having with regional health professionals with potential space to put them as well.
Okay, I guess if the point is is a distinction between, perhaps between the physical area of the police department and being part of the police department. I don't think it should be part of the police department. I have some doubts about it being located within the physical area of the police department, but I, that I, I could imagine, but at a minimum, I don't think to, this seems, seemed to suggest to me that it would be in the police department, and the staff would be staff supervised by the police department. I don't, I don't think that would be appropriate.
I, I hear you on that, Councilmember Kovar, but it's, what were suggestions, what would you have? Where would they go in the organization? Because typically, when you look at crisis intervention across the nation, they're tied with your public safety divisions, either police or fire. In our case, it would be the police department. And so there is no other appropriate place where we would have them located or partnering with under a department outside of police.
All right, I'll, I'll think about that. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Kostic.
Yeah, thank you. I share the concerns that Councilmember Kovar raised about the, the mental health counselors being embedded in the police department. And I appreciate that, that, that may need to be where they physically are located, but I don't think that necessarily has to be where they are located in terms of their kind of reporting structure and, and space within the larger city organization. And I, I think if there are, you know, if we need to get the project moving sooner and that requires, you know, kind of an initial connection with the police department, I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think long-term, we need to be looking at how to, how to have an alternative structure there. So that's what I would like to see.
And I believe that was what, I, I know the police chief spoke to this last week or the week before, that this is a pilot. And that, given our current staff capacity and where, where things can be housed, looking at this as a pilot and then for the next couple of years, and if it's successful, I believe, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the police chief, if I remember correctly, I'm sure I will be corrected, but that, you know, even even long-term, looking at this and working, really working with the county to put something in that's sustainable long-term. But the idea was to see whether or not a pilot here and and assess the need and how much a crisis team was being used. So I, I think, just given the staff capacity that we have at the moment, and I know many of us want to move on this, that the ideal situation may be not to have this in the police department, but looking at this as a pilot and hopefully in the long-term reassessing. So I believe that's what the police chief talked about last week. Councilmember Smith?
So a question for staff, you know, I, I don't know the answer to this. Is it possible for crisis counselors to work from home or work from their car? Is it, they have to have a physical office space? Thank you.
Yep. Typically with crisis intervention, yes, it would be an actual physical space that they would have. And they normally be embodied into your city hall or your public safety divisions. So when there's, when there's a call that goes out, you would have them out with the officer or with the fire department, or whatever the structure is within your agency is typically how, how it's done across the nation.
So they're more like partners with fire or police?
That's one way you could look at it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilman Dibala?
Yes, thank you. I had already sent in written comments on the ordinance itself, and I had suggested using the phrase coordinated with, although partners with also works as opposed to the language in the draft ordinance, which says embedded. To let you know and where I'm at on that one.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens. You're on mute, Councilmember Siemens. You're still on mute, Councilmembers.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, now we can hear you.
I'm learning. First of all, I thank you for recognizing me and helping me to get online here. But I'm, I'm certainly well aware of the difficulties that that community members have had with police across the nation. And I also know that we started several years ago to talk about and take, take steps forward to change the culture of our police department. I think we've made great strides in that regard. And so I think as we think about where these services should be provided, mental health crisis counseling should be provided. I think we should be working about what we want as far as the ideal public safety aspect rather than trying to worry about the, you know, safeguarding community members and police interactions. I think we've, we're working in that direction. I think it's far better than it has been in the past. And I think the ideal situation is that we have mental health crisis counselors as responders working in conjunction with our other public safety workers, which are, are police officers. I fully trust the the police chief to implement this in the way that meets those visions that we have. And I, you know, if we have problems with the way that's done in the future, then we should address that problem. But right now, I don't think that dividing them is the right way to, to work since many, we've heard that many of the, the public safety calls have a mental health component to it. And I think it's gonna be harder to do a good job if they're separated than it is if we leave them at least whether co-located or not, but, but within the same organization. So I obviously think that it should remain with the police department. And, and maybe we need to change the name of the police department to the Public Safety Department.
You, Councilmember Siemens, Councilwoman Cersei.
Thank you. So one of the things, and I know we're going to talk through the Public Safety Task Force recommendations next week. But I do just want to remind folks that there's a lot, a number of activities that are underway right now that kind of takes different pieces of this puzzle and tries to address them separately. And we just need to be a little patient as these different pieces come together. So for example, as the mayor mentioned, you know, the, the Mental Health Crisis Counselors Project is a pilot. And the idea, and the chief has explained before, that although the pilot is being operated as part of the police department, which I think for a pilot is important, because as Councilmember Siemens mentioned, that's where the vast majority of the calls are going to come in. We need to kind of figure out dispatch, we need to kind of figure out, you know, non-emergency call-in numbers, we got 988 going. So there's a lot of different things that are happening right now, that having those mental health counselors, at least as part of the pilot, so we can understand what works in the city, tied to the police department for the time being, is, I think, important for us to get a better handle on volume of mental crisis calls that come through, how they're routed, how things need to be routed, so they go to the mental health crisis counselors, how we interact with mobile crisis units in the county. I think all of that is important. Another big thing to keep in mind is we also have the organizational assessment study that's happening. And there were recommendations around not just how we're dealing with dispatch, but how we're dealing with other arms that may interact with people that are in need of perhaps mental health crisis services, right? And there were recommendations in that regard as well, and that study is ongoing. And that will help us with also thinking through, what should our org chart look like, right? So I think all of those things together are important to keep in mind. And kind of talking about the Mental Health Crisis Counselor line item, which I think we should move forward with, because we need to get this pilot going, without kind of having that full-fledged conversation, which we'll have next week, where you can kind of see where all of these other pieces and the movement that's happening on all of these pieces, other components is, is going forward. It's kind of hard, but I, I think, I, I think once folks kind of see how all of these different pieces will fit together, it'll be a lot clearer as to how it's kind of okay for this pilot to work with the police department, because we have other activities underway to help us think through the org chart and where people sit and things like that. So just wanted to share that.
Great. Thank you for that reminder, Councilwoman Cersei. Because we've also discussed, you know, in all of this, like where neighborhood services should sit and all of this stuff. So I think that's, that's another great point to remind us. All right. So I think we're moving on then to the multifamily house rehabilitation fund, and I'm going to say that's going to be a hold for the moment as well. And is that a good assumption? I'm just looking at the time and it's 10:20. So unless someone feels a very pressing need to speak to that, I will just put that on hold. Next is the social service partnerships. I will put forward that I want to put this back to the $3 million mark on this one, and I'll have a suggestion for an offset when we get to it. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I, just going back to the multifamily housing rehab fund, I would like to see that go back to the original proposed number. I believe that's 1.5 million.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And moving on to the recreation center redevelopment, there was a suggestion by staff to reduce that line item by 30,000. So the total would be 320,000. Councilmember Smith, is that an old hand or a new hand for the rec center?
It's an old hand, I'm sorry.
Thank, no, I think I thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, I, I do agree on restoring the multifamily housing fund, but for the, for the social service partnerships, I 100% agree we should restore it to 3 million. So thank you for proposing that. Within that, I do believe that the direct payments should be as close as we can get to the upper end of the various proposals that we saw from staffs. I'd like to see it get to around the 2.3 million, the 2.3 million level with the remainder divided between the navigators and the nonprofit grants. And I know there are questions about exactly what form the direct payments should take, but I just wanted to record that for you.
Thank you. I think we can come back to that when we know the amount that will end up there. So I had moved on to the recreation center, anything there? Okay, seeing nothing there, we can keep that at 320. Next, we had the community center renovation at 1.2 million. Say, Councilmember Dibala, I think you were first, and then Kovar.
I was just going to propose in view of the tightness of the budget, we, there's, there's so many good things to do and the money just doesn't stretch through all of it. And so a couple of weeks ago, we looked at the $200,000 in the capital budget, and we said, well, let's try to keep everything in ARPA. I would like to reintroduce that as a possibility, that we reduce this by 200,000 because we have already got $200,000 in the capital budget. So we've got the 1.2 together. And then we can hear, hopefully, I, I would like to have a work session on that as soon as we can to look at some of the details of, of the, of the proposed project and get the bids out as soon as we can, so we can see what it really costs, because we don't really know.
Okay, thank you.
So that's a two-part suggestion.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was checking. Councilmember Kovar?
I'm sorry that I'm raising my hand so many times. As mentioned before, I don't think we should go forward with this one at this point in ARPA. I think there's a lot of great projects. This is a meritorious project. It's something it does appear we need to do. But I, I just think to do everything else we're talking about, including restoring some of the funds, and at least for now, put it on hold, some additional funds while we drill down on the library, library cost estimates. I would propose not going forward with the community center renovation. As an alternative, we could, we could put it on hold to see where we get at the end, but I, I propose just we not go forward with it out of ARPA.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just doing a time check here. It is 10:23. And my hope is that we can get through this, the chart by 11 o'clock. So just if I ask my colleagues to also be mindful of the time. Okay, moving on to the library expansion, as we have discussed. This was increased when we talked about it last week, gosh, that seems like a month ago, to 4 million. And as we discussed, this would be put on hold until we can have a deeper conversation with staff and our construction manager regarding the, the actual cost for the library. So there, there is the potential that we may not use the, our need to use the 4 million, but at the moment, there's a potential we may. So that was the request by staff that we put on hold for the time being, the 4 million. Any comments on this one? Okay, so I guess that's, Councilmember Dibala?
Sorry, trying to look at my notes and raise my hand at the same time. So I understand that we need to put money on hold in order, in order to, to review this. But I think that I'd like to put forward several specifics along with the hold. We expect the value engineering results as soon as next week. So I would like to see a work session as soon as possible on the cost, so we can get the bids out the door, so we can see what we're working with. I think it's imperative that we have bid alternatives. That would be something we would talk about in the work session. And I think it important that we continue to explore all the funding options possible. Again, topic for the work session, but I, I think those things are important to say again. And I, I, I think I share everybody's frustration with escalation in nationwide construction. I mean, I talked to a couple of architect friends of mine in other parts of the country, and they, they were not surprised. Let's just put it that way. So.
I think that's some language that we could probably put into the ordinance.
Yes, that was exactly where I was going with that. I just wanted people to know that I would like to address something to that effect, because it's not in the draft that I sent to.
Again, Councilmember Kovar?
I agree with Councilwoman Dibala in terms of needing all those things, all that information, but before we be ready to decide how to proceed, I'll just add one other thing. I did send in today, and I wasn't expecting responses today because it was late, but some queries to the staff regarding the stormwater issues connected to the site as well. And so that should be rolled into, in my view, the, the future discussion on this as well.
Okay, thank you. All right then, so the 4 million on hold stays. And we're moving on then. There was no changes to the interactive online budget to, tool, financial software, or the premium pay for essential workers. So I think all those can stay unless I see some objections. I think that all works. So we'll keep those. On the contingency amount, I'm proposing, since I suggested we put the social service partnerships back to 3 million, that we find the 530 some odd, the amount out of the ARPA contingency amount, so that we can keep the social service partnerships at 3 million. So that's where I was finding the offset. So we can put that, we can note that under contingency. Okay, um. So I, I'm going to do it this way. If anyone objects, just let me know, just because I'm trying to figure out the easiest way to do this. I think the first thing we should take is the community center renovation. And Councilmember Kovar's suggestion to put that on hold because of, or to, to take it out or take out the 200,000, because that will give us money for other things. Does that make sense? Are people okay with that if we start there? Yes, I see Councilwoman Kostic shaking, nodding her head. All right, so I, I guess.
Just to, just to point, they're not the same thing, putting the whole thing on hold.
I know, I'm just like, if I could finish my sentence. Yeah, so I was going to ask Councilmember Kovar, I want to get, just get clarity, we're on, were you suggesting putting it on hold, taking the money out? I just want to make sure I, I understand what you wanted to do here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry if that was unclear. I'm saying, let's not do that out of ARPA.
Okay, that's what, all right. So raise your hand if you agree to take out the 1,200, the 1.2 million dollars for the community center renovation out of ARPA funds. See, Councilmember Smith and Kovar. All right, that stays in. Raise your hand if you think we should reduce this amount by $200,000 and use the 200,000 that is currently in our budget this year.
I just have a question about that, about the feasibility of that. Based on where we are with the budget at the moment. Is that, have we had a loss of revenue that will prevent us from using those funds? Or that's basically what I'm trying to figure out?
So, so your, your question is, will we have to use, decrease some of our CIP to be able to balance the budget? Or begin to start the budget for '23? Is that your question?
Well, my understanding, and maybe I'm not understanding Councilmember Dibala's proposal correctly, but my understanding is that we had budgeted 200,000 in the FY '22 budget. And so has that money already been spent, or is that still available to put towards this 1.2 million? And my understanding of Councilmember Dibala's proposal is we still use that 200K that was in the FY '22 budget, rather than taking it out of ARPA. And so I'm wondering, is that, are we in a position to be able to do that? Or are we stretched so thin that that's not possible?
So put it, put it another way, I, I do believe I was told that we have not spent that $200,000 as allocated. Therefore, in my opinion, it should probably still be there as allocated.
That's correct. We haven't spent that yet, and we, we could use it in this fiscal year based on our projection.
Not with, notwithstanding that it may be a tight budget year, and it, well, it will be a tight budget year in the coming year. So, yeah, didn't mean to say anything about fiscal '23 here.
Correct.
So it is feasible to use the 200,000. Correct. Okay. So Councilmember Siemens?
Yes, so you're saying that money is not, not going to be needed to balance the budget?
Correct. We're currently projecting a surplus for fiscal year 2022 in the general fund.
All right. So Councilmember Cersei.
Sorry, I think, you know, for me, the thing that's kind of tricky is we're talking about these ARPA dollars. We're talking about potential carryover monies for 2022, and yet we have not started talking about the budget for '23, when the constant yield rate is not, you know what I mean? So I, I, I'm hesitant to operate under this assumption that we're going to have this tremendous windfall in terms of this 2022 surplus, which could be in part because we are able to fund some of our planned activities using the ARPA dollars. And, and not, if possible, try to carry some of those dollars forward into 2023, so that they're non-ARPA dollars, so that we can actually have conversations around the tax rate based on additional resources that might be in the general fund. So, I mean, again, I, 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 I'm, I'm open to how folks want to talk about this, but I, I will say, you know, it's, it, it, it's, it gives me a little heartburn to start talking about moving around budget dollars between fiscal years when we're getting ready to go into conversations around the next 20, the next budget. And we don't know what that's going to look like. So, yeah. So that, that's just my two cents. You know, if we haven't obligated that 200K, I guess we could obligate it under, under this project and only put that, that ARPA, you know, a million of the ARPA dollars. But that also means that you don't have that 200K flexibility of a carryover in case we need it for the general fund for 2023. Unless I'm, I'm missing something.
Councilmember Siemens, you're on mute if you're talking.
I, I appreciate what you had to say, Councilmember Cersei, and I, I think in the interest of of making sure that this project does go forward, I would advocate for leaving that $200,000 in here. And it's not like the $200,000 later, if it's an excess in the CIP, that, you know, it could be shifted around to benefit us in another way. So I would leave this in.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Siemens. All right, so all those in favor of taking out $200,000 and using $1 million instead of 1.2 million in ARPA dollars for the community center renovation, raise your hand. Councilwoman Kostic?
Plus the $200,000 we already allocated.
Right, yeah. So I. Right, yeah, so I, 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 Councilwoman Caustic, DiBala, Siri.
Councilmember Siemens. The vote is to use the 200 and make this a million, is that what it is?
Yes. So raise your hand, I have. Um, Caustic, DiBala. Siri. Um, voting for, I'll vote for it too, sorry, take out, so well, this will be a million, um. Here, alright. So we'll do that, um. So that stays in then, so we can make that green, um, Deputy City Manager Clark. Alright, so then we are left with, um, there's one more category above that we're not seeing, is that correct, that we still have outstanding? Because we have that multifamily, did I miss? Yeah, so, yeah, no, it's okay. So we have, um. Putting back the 500,000 for the energy efficiency, the 700,000 for the multifamily. And increasing the social service partnerships back to three million. Um, so I'm gonna say that unless somebody else has, um, some new math they want to try on this chart. That I'm not seeing where we would find the, um, 500,000, um, for the energy efficiency upgrades or the multifamily. Um, housing rehab, is that? Or somebody want to make another, Councilwoman Siri.
Um, so it, it looks like if, if. I'm doing my math right, which probably isn't right at 10:30, um, that means we have 200K to shift, um. And so I would propose making that multifamily housing rehab fund, bumping that up to a mil.
Okay. And, and just to, um, clarify from what, um, WC Manager Clark said before, that the, uh, the rehab fund and the, um, energy efficiency upgrades are, are. Those projects are gonna be kind of hand in hand with, or hand in glove, whatever the saying is with each other?
Yes, the, the administrators of both will be consulting very closely with each other around their applicants and which projects.
Yeah, so if we were to bump that 800 up to a mil, that would give us 1.5 for both.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I would support that. Thank you for, um, proposing that. Let's see, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, I would propose taking, uh, the money that we need for, uh, both the rental. Uh, housing rehabilitation fund and the energy efficiency, uh, from the form, uh, reducing the four million dollars from the, uh. Library expansion fund.
Okay. Alright, any other proposals, Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. So we have not yet voted to, on the contingency amount?
No, we don't, you, you can. If you want to put it on another proposal, you can, but no, we did, we, only things we voted on and made a decision on, green.
Right, okay, I just, um, green, I'm not seeing green. Or, okay, nevermind, um, so. So I was, I was gonna suggest dividing it between energy efficiency and housing, um, 150 and, and, and 50, but. You know, either way, the notion of taking the 200,000 and plowing it back into these two programs. I think makes a great deal of sense.
Are you okay with Council Miss Siri's recommendation to put the? Put it into the multifamily housing?
Since they are going to be in tandem anyway, and only if they're going to be in tandem anyway. Which is a question of how we write the language in the ordinance, then I would be okay.
Great, so let's, do I see any other proposals on this one? Alright, not seeing any, let's take Councilmember Smith's first, um. Are they, um, uh, raise your hand if you support, um. Taking the multifamily housing rehab back up to 1.5. And the energy efficiency upgrades back up to, um, a million, which, um, and taking that sum. Which is 1.2 million, if I just did my math correctly, um, out of the library expansion hold. Councilmember Siemens and Smith, um, so that, um. So then we'll move on to the next proposal, which was, um, Councilwoman Siri proposing $200,000 that we took from. The community center renovation and putting that to the multifamily housing rehab fund. To bring that up to a, um, a million dollars, um. Uh, raise your hand if you support that. Now, one, two, oh, one, two, three, four, five, Councilmember Kovar. Did you want, you did not support that, okay. Um, alright, so we have five there. And I think, um, WC Manager Clark, if you wanted to, um, just note that in the ordinance, if we could have some language, I. Don't recall when I read it earlier today, if it does say that the two projects, the energy efficiency upgrades and the rehab would be.
It does, yeah, in the project descriptions.
Perfect, I just, I couldn't remember from reading earlier today, thank you for clarifying. Um, so I think we can put in green then the 500,000 for the energy efficiency upgrades. I think we took care of that. So then, then the next thing, and I. And if I did this correctly, I think we can take in tandem, which is increasing the social service partnerships back to three million. And taking that money out of the ARPA contingency amount. So all those in favor of increasing the, um, back to the social service partnerships back to three million and taking that money from the ARPA contingency amount, please raise your hand. I have, um, Councilmember Caustic, wait, um. Myself, one, two, three, four, five, oh, six, okay, six people, Councilmember Siemens, you were no on that, correct? No, okay, so we had six, thank you. Alright, um, then I think we're done with this, Councilmember Kovar. Oh, and then I, I had some language I wanted to propose for the ordinance, um. And other folks may have some other language, um, but I think, um, the math should work here, um. Did anyone have any other suggestions or changes here? No, alright, I just wanna, um, WC Manager Clark, uh, City Manager Fox, or you all, is this, did we do this right?
Yes, it, it, it works out and, and we'll be able to take these figures and put it in the draft ordinance and update it.
Terrific, thank you very much, um, and we have about fifteen minutes before, um, ending our meeting at, um, eleven o'clock and. Want to just, um, highlight some things and I can, um, email them to, these to you, um, uh, to the staff. Um, but one thing I'd like to see in the, um, ordinance specified is that, um. By, um, and, and these dates, if staff want to suggest other things, I just put them in here because I thought they sounded like, um, good dates, is that. By March sixteenth, um, city staff will present a detailed plan for council input and approval of the social services partnership funds. Um, I know we've had, you've had some proposals to us about how much you go into navigators, how much to direct assistance, um, and rather than, um. Trying to have you come up with those funds or, I plan, um, because I, uh, in, uh, by the time that we would vote on this in the next couple of weeks to ask you to return. With, uh, give you a little bit more time and return with a suggestion on how to split up the, um, the three million dollars, um, for council to. Um, review, um, and I, again, I'm open to another date other than March sixteenth, but I know we wanted to. Um, move on this pretty quickly and I know a lot of work has been done, but, um, if, if staff wanted to suggest something else, but. Um, instead of trying to, um, I'm, I'm proposing that instead of trying to figure out the exact amounts. Um, in time to vote on this in the next couple of weeks that we ask you to return and, and report back to us what those amounts might be in the different buckets.
I, I, I would say, Madam Mayor, I, I, that, that the sixteenth, um.
Do you need more time? Don't, you don't need to tell me that, like, if you, if, we can, we can talk about it before next week. Again, I'm. Literally was throwing, I was like, that's a month from now, I don't, um, so.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to just, just overlay, oh, the next four or five weeks is gonna be tough because we're gonna be dead into fiscal year twenty-three. Um, budget and we have some deliverables around that time and so we, we may have to circle back on, you know, when we actually can. Um, you know, come back and provide more detail.
Okay, um, the other thing is, um, as we're going to propose that on, um. April twentieth, we received, um, just quick updates on how things are going on. The multi-housing rehabilitation, energy efficiency upgrades, business incubators and recreation center redevelopment. Um, doesn't have to be detailed full reports, but just the progress that was made to date. Um, the reason I picked April twentieth is that, that's two weeks before we have budget reconciliation. Um, so thought that that might be a good time for council to get, um, a sense of, uh, where staff, um, is on those, on those projects in case we want to look at. Um, including any other general funds, um, to some of them particularly like the multifamily housing rehabilitation or energy efficiency upgrades. Since in the past, we have put general funds in those areas, um. And so, um, again, I thought that might be, that's two months from now and again, you know, a lot, some work may be done, some other work may, may not be done. Um, given you may, staff may already have all the, um, multi-housing rehabilitation funds and energy efficiency upgrades, um, committed. In that case, I think it would be helpful for council to know that in considering, uh, final budget numbers. So. I was gonna also propose that we just, um, get quick updates on that on April twentieth. Um, and then we talked about just adding language on having a work session on the library to go into some more details. Um, but those were, those were the additions I was going to suggest for the, um, ordinance, um, Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, I have something different, not about what you just proposed, so I can wait until people respond to that, I think. Those, asking for those reports though from staff does make sense to me.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yes, um, I think I might have missed it. You included the atrium in the.
Recre, the, yes.
The twentieth, okay.
Wait, no, I didn't.
So I think the community, so I, of the community center renovation, uh, and atrium. Uh, addressing atrium repairs is a separate work session or whether it can be addressed in the April twentieth. Work session, but again, wanting to get moving on the things we've agreed that we want to do. And so it should be sooner rather than later. I just don't know when I leave that to staff to come back to tell us.
Um, Councilmember Smith.
No, I would just, you know, ask staff how they feel about these dates. I mean, uh, you guys are. Going to be switching to the budget, will you even have capacity? Uh, with these timelines to even think about these issues right now for these proposals?
I, I, I would say, I mean, I, I mean, as I shared, you know, with, with the mayor earlier, um, on some of these dates, we, we're gonna have to circle back on, um. One of a lot of these dates, because it's, it's, we're gonna have to overlay it on the budget schedule that we shared with staff and we're working on right now. I. Can't commit one way or another tonight, you know, what we'll be able to do without, uh, circling back with staff and looking at our, um, budget timeline.
You know, uh, Mr. Fox, let, let me say, uh, I want you guys to, uh, get the budget right. You know, uh, this is your first budget with us, uh, you know, as long as these projects are moving forward, I, I'm happy with that. You want to start reporting after. Uh, the council is, uh, approved the budget, that's fine with me, but, um, you know, you and your, your staff need to huddle and, 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 and start working on this budget.
Councilwoman DiBala is an old hand or a new hand?
It was an old hand, but I will just take the opportunity to say that I think it, that, that this is part of the budget. This is the multi-year addition. We have multi-year capital budget, now we have multi-year ARPA budget, and so I think that the, the intelligent thing is to have these conversations in. In conjunction with each other, and that's why I think it ought to be happening in the April timeframe.
If I, if I can respond, uh, I, I would ask Mr. Fox if. While he is preparing the actual fiscal budget for FY twenty-three, if he thinks that what we're doing with ARPA is the same.
Councilmember Smith, um, it's, the way I look at it, you, you take ARPA as like a, a mini budget, uh, that we have. Uh, and so what you all have discussed tonight will roll into the budget, similar to like the CIP process that you have historically done in previous years. Uh, it will be part of the city budget, um, but there's other pieces that, um, projections that we're working on. Um, that we need to dive a little bit more deeper in.
And I just want you to dive into those pieces.
Okay, um, we have eight minutes left, um, for our meeting unless we want to extend it, uh, Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, there was one other thing we didn't discuss and in the, um, appendix or the, um. I guess it's called the exhibit that goes with the resolution, the very last item is the. Um, budget for the administrative positions and it's, it covers all four years of the. Uh, period in, in which we'll be working with the ARPA funds and so, and it gives a total. I just want to understand if we're voting for this, are we literally committing all those funds or is that still an annual exercise? And maybe we can just clarify. Tweak the language to clarify that, because I don't think we should vote on something when we approve this, if we do, assuming we do later in the, a month or early next month rather. Uh, to, to lock in salaries for the next four years. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, you know, we should ta, take a look at how we're doing this year.
Any response from staff or? No, okay. Um, anything else? Alright, um, I think we're ready to vote on this next week. If you, I feel like we're close, um, there's still some language, um, changes, but I think we've. Um, thank you to Councilwoman DiBala for circulating some. I don't think any of those are necessarily controversial or, uh, I'm gonna rock the boat too much, um, and, um. I, um, I just check in with the city manager and is there anything else, um, you need from us at this point, um, in order for us to move forward with the vote next week?
Nope, I, I, I think we, we have all we, all we need from the night and, uh, we, we thank you, Mayor and Council.
Great, well, thank you all for, um, your work on this, um, and pulling this together and, um. I for one look forward to, um, voting on this, um, next week and the following week, um, and, um, getting a move on, on it. So thank you very much, um, for all the work and. I think that is it. We are adjourned from the, uh, for the evening. I hope everyone, uh, has a, a good weekend. Monday is, um, President's Day, so. Hopefully people can get, um, some rest as we move forward, uh, to all the other many things we have. So, thank you all, uh, this, for this evening and, uh, we'll see you next week.